All right, Mayor Heading. I do have my devices rolling, and the floor is yours.
Very good, thank you. Good evening. This is the City of Morro Bay, City Council. This is the regular meeting being held on Tuesday, March 23, 2021. It is 5:30 PM. This meeting is being held via teleconference, and I will ask the clerk if she will establish a court of justice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
I am present.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
And Mayor Heading.
Present, thank you. We do have a court, so I will call the meeting to order pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order Number N2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17, 2020. This meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on cable channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for this meeting, and information regarding public comment will be placed on the screen at the appropriate time for you to be able to hopefully log in or call in and join us for public comment. With that, I would ask for just a moment of silence, please. Thank you for that. And we will move to the Pledge of Allegiance. When we have the flag on the screen, we will begin. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. And I will ask our city attorney, Mr. Nirmeyer, do we have any closed session report this evening, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No closed session items to report tonight.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. We will go ahead and move to Mayor and Councilmember reports. Let's go ahead and start with Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Heller, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to say to everyone listening and everyone who has commented on the various items on tonight's agenda or any agenda of any of the meetings that I want to thank you for your correspondence. Thank you for being involved with city business. We need and want your input. And I know it can get discouraging at times if things don't go your way, but I urge you to continue to stay involved, continue to make suggestions, continue to let us know your opinions about every issue. And I thank each and every one of you for your emails and agenda correspondence and comments regarding every issue on tonight's agenda. And I hope you will continue in the future. Thank you very much. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Let's go ahead and move to Councilmember Barton. Do you have any announcements this evening?
Well, no announcements, but I did attend the Eback meeting on March 18. And there were a lot of topics discussed, rental inspections, empowering code enforcement, rental relief program for small businesses, et cetera, and balancing out all the interests on inspections for rentals for safer conditions, cost to local government and landlords. It was a very interesting meeting, lots of attendance, lots of suggestions. So, thank you.
Thank you for that report, Councilmember Barton. Appreciate it. And Councilmember Davis, sir? Any announcements this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say congratulations to Chris and Cindy Casteca for taking ownership of the Anderson Inn. They are refurbishing the rooms right now, and they plan to have a grand opening on April 15. And I want to echo Councilmember Heller's appreciation for the emails that we received in the past few days, particularly concerning item C1. And I want to assure every person who wrote to us that I read every email, and I use those to develop the questions that I will ask staff tonight. And I hope that that will serve to address concerns. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. That will bring us to Councilmember Addis, please. Any announcements this evening?
I do. I actually have five or six different announcements. And I want to start by recognizing the horrific events that have happened recently, both in Boulder as well as in Atlanta, supporting the Asian-American Pacific Islander community as well as the victims and survivors of the shooting in Boulder. And I do believe that we don't have any time to wait to take action to end gun violence. And just remind our council that we had approved an item about, gosh, over a year ago to come forward to look at what our city could do in the area of gun safety. And so I'm hoping that with these most recent events, as we are thinking about the victims and survivors and that our hearts are with them, but that we're also willing to take action. In terms of the Asian-American Pacific Islander community, I also wanted to share that there's going to be a National Day of Action this Friday, March 26. And I've reposted information about that on my social media, Dawn Addis City Council. You can find bystander training, and you can find ways to support the Asian-American community, of which we have many businesses here in Morro Bay. So I hope that council and the public will join me in supporting our Asian-American community here locally. I also wanted to share that I was able to attend the County Homeless Services Oversight Council, or HFOC, recently. And they've updated their draft plan to end homelessness within 10 years. And part of that are some recommendations about alternatives to encampments. So how to provide services to existing homeless encampments, how to authorize more sanctioned encampments, how to authorize safe parking programs, how to create alternative housing programs, and how to increase shelter space in South County is all part of that 10-year draft plan as well as the encampment recommendations. So that was at County Homeless Services Oversight Council. And then I want to thank those that were able to attend the childcare chat yesterday. We had a wonderful discussion. And if you weren't able to attend, there's information on my social media about childcare in the county, but specifically about needs in Morro Bay. And then I have three events that the public is invited to come to this week as well as the beginning of next week. So one is a panel that I'm moderating on March 25 on building an inclusive and intimidation-free democracy. The next is a -- sorry, that's my cat in the background. The next is a Vistra briefing that Mayor Heading and I will be hosting as the Morro Bay Power Plant Subcommittee. That's on March 29. And then finally, I'll be hosting Congressman Carvahal on April 5 to talk about issues in Washington, but more importantly, issues here on the Central Coast and those that affect Morro Bay. So again, that one's April 5. All of that's on my social media, Dawn Addis City Council. And then lastly, we do have advisory board openings for the Harbor Advisory Board as well as the T-Bid, and that application closes on Friday. And that information is at morrobayca.gov or the city's website. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. I appreciate your recognition of some of the issues that we are facing in our country today. And I share your concerns and your sentiments. Thank you for that. I also just will add, we also have a vacancy on our Public Works Advisory Board as well as the other two you mentioned. So I just wanted to make sure people knew. Again, the deadline for application is March -- this Friday, March 26 at 5 PM. If you're interested, please see the city website, and you can fill out an application. We'd love to have your participation. Should turn on my video to let you know I'm still here. Also, there is a new website available that gives you information on vaccination availability at your community pharmacies. The website is VaccineFinder, B-A-C-C-I-N-E-F-I-N-D-E-R.org. It will bring up information on -- if you put in your zip code where you live, and it will bring up information on the pharmacies in the area that do have doses available of COVID-19. The supply to retail pharmacies has increased dramatically. And if you're having trouble accessing the county system where we still have three vaccine sites, Questa College, One in Pasan Robles, and also Road Grande, if you're having trouble getting in there, you may want to try VaccineFinder.org and find out if the retail pharmacy has availability. And you can just click on that pharmacy, and we'll give you information on how to make an appointment with them. We are hopefully continuing to turn the curve with regard to COVID-19 in this county. Forty-three new cases today. Not to detail statistics too much, but just to give you a very brief update, we do remain in the red tier. We have about 20,300 confirmed cases. Now only 220 active cases. That has decreased substantially. In order to move to the orange tier, which hopefully the county might be able to do in the next week or so, we need a case rate of 7.0 -- excuse me, 4.0 or less. Currently, our rate is 7.0. We are moving in the right direction with that, and hopefully we will be able to attain that, like I say, within the next week or so. Twelve -- excuse me, eight patients in the hospital with COVID, four in the ICU, plenty of ICU capacity. Sadly, in our county, 253 deaths to date due to COVID-19. The good news is that total cases are declining and continue to decline. In January, we had about 7,500 new cases. In February, 1,853. And in March to date, as of yesterday, just 616 cases. So definitely trending in the right direction. The 14-day average continues to decline. And however, I will continue to suggest as the mandate that we have suggests that face masks, social distancing, and frequent hand washing remain extremely important things to adhere to, even if you have been fully vaccinated. Even if you have been fully vaccinated. The county has distributed now -- has been distributed, I should say, over 87,000 doses of vaccine and has administered 78,152 doses, which is very significant. Supply at our county clinics has increased dramatically. As I said, it has in the retail sector. And so you can go to Readyslow.org to make your appointment there in any one of the clinics to receive your vaccine. And lastly, I attended the California Coastal Committee -- Commission, excuse me, meeting last week. Virtually, of course. As you all probably know by now, the Coastal Commission staff recommendation was accepted and actually shortened to eliminate off-road vehicle, off-highway vehicle, or OHV, riding on the dunes, the Pomodunes in the park. That will be a phase-out period of three years. The extensive -- the discussion was extensive. Staff had recommended a five-year phase-out of riding. However, the commission voted unanimously to reduce that to a three-year phase-out, which will, in my opinion, being on the Air Pollution Control District Board, dramatically improve over time the air quality issues that we're facing in South County. So plenty of information on their website. You can actually watch the whole 12-hour meeting, if you'd like, by going to their website, clicking on the meeting, which was last Thursday. So, thank you. With that, I will move to our city manager, Mr. Collins. Your report, sir?
No report tonight, Mayor and Council, thank you.
We'll let you off easy on that part tonight. And go ahead and move to presentations. Item A5, which I'm not going to right now, but I'm going to pull that proclamation out. We do have with us this evening Rachelle Bowley. And Rachelle, I'm sorry if I didn't pronounce that correctly. But David, do you want to go ahead and bring Rachelle in?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not seeing Rachelle in the waiting room, but perhaps someone else from Capslow has joined us to receive the proclamation. And if they would like to raise their hand so that we can acknowledge them, that would be great.
I'll give you a couple of seconds to see if we have anybody from Capslow here. Otherwise--
I'm not seeing anyone yet.
Okay, then--
I spoke too soon. I see -- I do see someone here, and I'm going to promote them so that we can -- Ms. Nakasha, perhaps?
Do we have her video? Is she unmuted?
Ms. Nakasha, if you'd like to turn on your video so we can recognize you for the proclamation?
Yes, I am--
Thank you very much.
I'm not here from Capslow, but I'm from We Are the Care Initiative, and I'm working with -- so--
Well, welcome. I'm going to go ahead and present you the proclamation, and have you received that? This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay declaring April 2021 as Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the Morro Bay City Council recognizes that every moment in a child's life is an opportunity for that child to learn, that the quality of these experiences may determine whether a child succeeds in school and in life, and that all children need caring and loving adults in their lives. And whereas April, Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month, marks a time to recognize that our community's children are precious assets, that the quality of their early years is our collective responsibility, and that we commit ourselves to ensuring that each and every child experiences a high-quality, early environment at home, at childcare, at school, and in the community that will provide their optimal development. And whereas in solidarity of the We Are the Care Initiative, we, as a community of partners and leaders, envision a San Luis Obispo County where all families can find and afford quality care for their children and where childcare professionals are valued for their critical role in building a solid foundation for and children and families to thrive in the world. And whereas a variety of virtual and safe outdoor activities hosted at www.sanlouischildcare.org honoring Month of the Child will provide an opportunity to acknowledge the dedication of individuals and organizations improving and enriching the lives of children and youth in our county and raise the awareness of the community, employers and elected officials, and of the need to improve the quality, availability, and accessibility of programs supporting children. Whereas Friday, April 2, 2021 commemorates Wear Blue for Kids Day, raising awareness for Child Abuse Prevention Month and recognizing that each of us has a role to play in ensuring the safety of our children and pledge our support for strategies that strengthen families and protect our young ones. And whereas in this caring and connected county, we will, including and beyond the Month of the Child, continue to dedicate our efforts and our resources to investing in our community's future by investing in and supporting our community's children and youth. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Morro Bay City Council is proclaiming April 2021 as the Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month and April 2, 2021 as Wear Blue for Kids Day. Thank you so much for being here. And did you want to say a few words, Mr. Nakasha, if I'm saying that correctly?
Yes, sir, you are. And thank you very much. I wanted to make a comment and public comment, but I don't know if this is the right time to do it. So again, I'm not here from Capslow, but I am here from We Are the Care Initiative, and we work with Capslow on a variety of issues that relate to childcare. So thank you very much for the proclamation. I'll make sure, and hopefully you'll make sure that that gets to Capslow. And then I can wave my turn on the public comment.
Great. Well, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it. And with that, we will go ahead and move to our next presentation. This is a presentation by Eckerd Connects Workforce Development. I believe Allison -- let me see if Allison, if I say it right. Shiao-- Shiao-- excuse me, Shiao?
Skiavo.
Oh, great, thank you. Welcome.
We're close, you're close.
I'm close. Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate having the opportunity to share with you about Eckerd Connects programming. My name is Allison Skiavo, and I'm the area manager here in San Luis Obispo County. We are a nationwide nonprofit operating in Slow County since 2016. We receive federal and state funding through contracts with the Department of Social Services to provide workforce development services. The public funding infuses taxpayer money into the local economy in two ways. First, through an array of business services that help employers find and retain workers. And second, by helping job seekers become viable job candidates through work readiness development, career coaching, and vocational skills training. We operate multiple programs out of America's Job Center in San Luis Obispo and in a satellite office in Atascadero. We serve people and businesses throughout the county, and it's through our work with Erica at The Chamber that I'm here presenting to you today. I want to share a few recent job seeker successes with you. You may be wondering, you know, if this has any relevance to you. And I think the reality is, we all know someone who's been impacted by COVID or is struggling to either find and keep workers or find a job, make a career transition themselves. I want to tell you about John. John was self-employed. He owned a motorcycle repair business that he was forced to close because it wasn't financially viable. He came to us for help finding work. We helped him identify some values and how he could translate his years of self-employment into something that was sort of clock-in, clock-out, but also paid good wages. We helped him decide on Class A truck driving. We paid for his truck driver training at a cost of about $4,500. He was with us in our program for a total of 12 weeks. He got his Class A license. We helped him build a resume and figure out how to do interviewing after many years of being on the other side of the interview table. And, you know, within 12 weeks, he accepted a job hauling grapes regionally, earning $300 a day. So that was a really quick and great opportunity. And the second success story I'd like to share with you is about Gloria. Gloria was recently single and had a couple kids. And she relocated to the area to be closer to family and have some family support raising her children. She needed a right-now job, and we worked with her to work at a grocery store that's a partner with us for short-term subsidized employment. She had a longer-term goal of working in the medical field that needed, you know, a survival gig so that she could make ends meet. We put her into a 12-week placement with a grocery store during which time we paid her wages. We paid liability insurance and workers' compensation. At the end of that 12-week placement, the grocery store hired her on as a regular part-time employee. And with that part-time job, we helped her execute her long-term plan by paying for her to get a dental assistant training program completed. And she became certified at the end of that training program. The cost of that training program was upwards of, I think, $8,800. When she finished that training program, we helped her build a resume, and she was able to find full-time employment with benefits at a dentist office here in Slow where she's currently working. And it's been almost 18 months since we started our work with her. So what we do is we help job seekers understand the local labor market, identify and overcome barriers to obtaining living wage work, including paying for vocational training. We also offer staff support in building a resume, executing a career plan, help applying for jobs, interviewing preparation, and so much more. It's always a hard time to find a job. It's even more complicated navigating it now. And we're here to help job seekers. We serve as accountability partners. Sometimes we're cheerleaders. Sometimes we're reality checkers. But always, we're experts in preparing people to become good job candidates. Our services are totally free to everyone who uses them. We also have services to help businesses, and I think this is, you know, really relevant now. We help businesses find and keep good employees. So we can do recruit, screen, and refer services if a business has existing openings. And we have funding available to offset the cost to train new hires and funds to place people into temporary positions at no cost to the business through our paid work experience program. A couple of recent business successes. We were working with a nonprofit in San Luis Obispo who had a special project that they needed to complete and needed help to get it done, but didn't have a budget to bring on new staff. They had a particular opening where they needed someone to come in and do some development work and office administration. And they were looking at maybe three months' worth of work. We happened to be, at the same time, working with a job seeker who was COVID-impacted. She had, for over a decade, worked in food service. And because of COVID, she went into her job, and then, you know, we changed tiers, and then she got furloughed, and then she went back. And she was really hoping to find something with a little more security and where she might be able to utilize a bachelor's degree. She got way back when in sociology because ultimately, she wants to work in a job where she can help people. So the nonprofit, we presented her to the nonprofit. They interviewed her. They recognized she had some of the skills and decided to take her on as a paid work experience participant. We paid her. We carried her workers' compensation and liability insurance for about 320 hours while she provided operational support to the business. She built a resume with recent relevant experience related to her education. She earned some extra cash, and we worked with her to figure out how she could do the paid work experience with us and not lose her unemployment insurance benefits. So she earned some extra cash with us, but she kept those benefits through the pandemic unemployment assistance. And then the nonprofit was able to get help for free through us. Another example of a recent business success, we had been working with a manufacturing company here in Slow. They'd been trying to fill a vacancy, and they sought out our services to help find someone. So we scanned our database. We work with EDD, so everyone who's on unemployment insurance has a resume in the system that we have access to, so we can source candidates through that website. And we tried to find someone and couldn't. So they posted the job on another website. A candidate applied directly to them. The business interviewed her, and they really liked her. But they recognized that while she had most of the skills, she needed to do the job. It had been over five years since she had worked in a manufacturing environment. And so there were some tech tools and upgrades and some business-specific protocols she needed to learn. The business referred her to us to see if we could qualify her for our program. And she did qualify, so we enrolled her. And we worked in partnership with her supervisor and the candidate to-- and the candidate to build a training plan. And we put together an on-the-job training contract with that employer. We reimbursed the business 50% of her wages for the first 400 hours of her working. So her starting wage was $18 an hour. We reimbursed $9 an hour, and that saved the company $3,600. You know, everybody knows when you have someone new come on board, all the production kind of slows down as someone's learning how to do that job. And so this OJT on-the-job training money is there to offset the cost of training someone new. In addition to that, while she's there for this training duration, we're able to help mitigate any issues, support her and her supervisor while they're getting through that initial 320 hours. The Paid Work Experience Program is temporary, and it's fully subsidized by our programs. The business is under no obligation to bring on the person as an employee. So you could use it as a working interview if you have existing openings or you're anticipating some hiring needs down the line. You can work with us, and you can sort of try before you buy. We can also use paid work experience to help a business get through a busy period or to fill a regular position where we can rotate participants through in intervals from two weeks to three months, depending on your need, and you'll never have to pay that employee. Again, we carry workers' comp and liability insurance. On-the-job training is a little different. It's designed, like I said, to offset the cost of training someone new. The business hires on the person as a regular employee, and we reimburse for a portion of that person's wages for a set amount of time, depending on what their training needs are. The business hires who they want. The partnership starts prior to a job offer being made. And we welcome businesses to partner with us to refer candidates that they like but recognize a training need to us to establish eligibility as part of the regular hiring process. We also have an existing group of job seekers engaged in our programs now who are ready to work, and we can refer people over to you from those programs. It's a challenging time to look for a job or make a career change, but necessary for many people right now. And I think it's an even more difficult time to function in an HR role with positions to fill. A lot of people don't want to go back to work for a multitude of personal invalid reasons. We've received a special grant to support placement of those COVID-impacted workers. The funds run out at the end of June, and we're dying to spend them on people and businesses, particularly by helping upscale the workers and providing businesses with paid work experience participants. We don't go away at the end of this funding. Eckerd Connects and America's Job Center are always available to help, and all of our services are always free. In fact, I think in many cases, we end up saving businesses and job seekers money. I appreciate your time and attention. I hope that you'll remember and share about our services when you encounter people who might benefit from them because we're here and excited to help.
Thank you, Allison. Very much appreciated. How can we get ahold of you or how can somebody get ahold of Eckerd Workforce Development?
So Eckerd Connects has a website. It's Eckerd.org backslash Slow. And my phone number is 805-423-0684. The Job Center is open Monday through Friday, 9 to noon and 1 to 4. We have workshops for job seekers done virtually, but if people have a lack of technology access, they're welcome to come to the center. And the Job Center's phone number is 805-286-8530. We're also your direct connect to EDD. So if you know people who are struggling to get their claims up and running or don't know what's happening, we can connect you to local EDD employees who can help figure out and navigate the system for you.
Well, thank you so much. Council members, any questions? Hearing none. Again, thank you for being here. Very much appreciated. Look forward to passing on information about the great work that your organization's doing to help people find work. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That will bring us to general public comment. This is public comment for items not on the agenda or items on the agenda for which you cannot stay. Pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N29-20, public comment will be made via Zoom and/or direct call-in in order to prevent and mitigate the effects of COVID-19, to limit the potential spread within the city. In accordance with this order, the city will not make available a physical location from which members of the public may observe the meeting and offer public comment. However, remote public participation is allowed, and the information for accessing that is on the screen through either the Zoom link or by calling the phone number on the screen. Remember to press the raise hand function and/or the number 9, *9 on your phone if you're calling in. So this is general public comment again for items on the agenda for which you cannot stay, that you'd like to speak to, or any other general items of interest to the council. And Anthony, do we have public comments, sir?
Yes, Mayor. I see a couple of hands raised. Let me go ahead and unmute the gentleman that spoke earlier, I believe, Natasha. Okay, Mr. Natasha, you are unmuted and free to speak.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Hello, my name is Zia Nakasha. I'm an attorney at Carmel Nakasha, and I'm here on behalf of the We Are the Care Initiative. As you just heard in the proclamation, April is the month of the child and Child Abuse Prevention Month. April marks a time to recognize that our community's children are precious, and the quality of their early years is our collective responsibility. We all have a role to play in ensuring each and every child has access to high-quality early environments at home, at childcare, at school, and in the community. That will promote their optimal growth and development. You might be wondering how you can honor and support the children and families in our community during the month of April. Luckily, we have three opportunities to offer you. Number one, explore the hashtag KidsAreEssential initiative. This national campaign stands for High Quality Childcare, Paid Leave, Economic Security, Maternal and Child Health, and Mental Health, and was born out of the many crises that are impacting children and families. COVID, racial injustice, and economic instability inspired this initiative, which upholds a goal to promote children in our society. Please visit KidsAreEssential.org to learn more. Number two, assess the policies of the city of Morro Bay in regard to family-friendly practices. Your city is a major local employer and can be a great example to other businesses in your community. By requesting HR or administrative staff to evaluate the family-friendly workplace policies currently in place, you can better identify deficits and expand practices to support your employees. As a reminder, the We Are the Care Initiative offers a family-friendly workplace toolkit containing a diverse selection of ideas and examples that can be implemented in order to better support families. Remember, family-friendly practices are better for business, better for the economy, and better for your city. Please visit SlowFamilyFriendlyWork.org to access the toolkit. Finally, to honor the Month of the Child and value the children and families in our county, consider becoming involved with We Are the Care. Parents, business leaders, childcare professionals, elected officials, and all other members of the public are encouraged and welcome to join the initiative. We are thankful for our childcare liaison on this council, Dawn Addis, but wish to remind you that all are welcome. We have four task forces that meet monthly, and we need the minds and talents that we know are out there in the community to help build this important movement. Visit firstfiveslow.org to learn more about the We Are the Care Initiative. A big thank you also to Councilwoman Addis for her childcare chat event last night. Thank you so much for your time and for your commitment to children and families in the city. We'll get back again soon with more information and updates. And as a personal issue, I just want to say that as a private business, I think we all can make a difference. I think we can make a difference to our employees.
Thank you, Mr. Nakasha.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And I also failed to mention that our own Estero Bay Foundation is honoring this month as well. They offer recreational programming for children, and they are too honoring the Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention. So thanks for that. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Betty Winholz with her hand up.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. This is Betty Winholz. Before I get into my two main comments, I want to just push off of what the mayor said about the meeting before Coastal on the Oceanic Dunes. And while the riders will be taking off the dunes in three years, they will still have a mile of beach to ride. So certainly their area is being limited, but there will still be a small place for them to ride after the three years. My second point that I'd like to make is requesting, as I did at Planning Commission last week, now that theaters open and we're able to go inside with appropriate conditions, I'm wondering when the council will consider returning us to the Veterans Hall so we can meet in person. And then my third comment has to do with a couple of incidences that happened last week with regarding to our tree ordinance and having three private trees cut within three days during nesting season, which is against our ordinance. And so I'm wondering if there is some way that the city can, either through water bills or on the website, or both, or in some other way, please remind the homeowners that this is nesting season. Nothing is to be cut until the end of that season, which is June 30th, and only in an emergency and only with the permission of the city. Three healthy trees were cut down without that. And I think we also need to remind those tree cutters who traditionally operate within the city that they are obligated as well to follow the law and not cut trees during nesting season. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Appreciate the comment regarding tree cutting. And we will try to get some additional information on the website with regard to that. Appreciate that very much. Next public comment, Anthony?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Sean Green with his hand up. I'm going to go ahead and unmute him.
Welcome, Sean.
Thank you, council. I just want to make a quick comment about the council and other advisory board meeting protocol and the medium through which we are meeting. Kind of piggybacking on what Betty had just mentioned in public comment. I think what we've done with tech services since the beginning of COVID has been really great. It's difficult for many people in this community to access this meeting, even given that wonderful work that we've done on the tech side. So if there's any way to work out some sort of hybrid between this online access and in-person access, I think that would really satisfy the best of both worlds. But as we welcome thousands of people a week into our town for the sake of kind of boosting our tourism revenue, it does seem incongruent to have a five-person meeting online. And I know sometimes we do have more significant public comment than others, but I think it is time to start transitioning to a more in-person or hybrid model. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate that. Next public comment, Anthony.
Mayor, I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay. Thank you so much. With that, I will go ahead and close general public comment. Just a couple of notes. One, we are following public health guidance from the San Luis Obispo County Public Health Department. It's my understanding that considerations potentially for live or the reopening of the Veterans Hall or live meetings will not be considered until we are in Tier 3 or possibly Tier 4 with further guidance to be coming out with regard to that. And we will make you aware. I think we're all anxious to get back live. I know I am. And appreciate the comments that were made with regard to that. So thank you very much for those comments. That brings us to Item A on our agenda. This is the consent agenda, Item A. I'll go ahead and open up public comment for any of the consent items, either A1 through A5. Public comment is now open. And Anthony, do we have any public comments, sir?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
All right. I'll go ahead and close public comment for the consent agenda. Bring it back to council, and I'll entertain a motion for approval or if you want to pull any items, that would be the appropriate time.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Addis to approve the consent agenda items, A1 through A5. Second by Councilmember Barton. Any further discussion? If not, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries by vote.
Thank you. That takes us to Item C-1, our first business item of the meeting. This is to adopt Resolution Number 12-21, authorizing the mayor to sign the purchase and sale agreement for acquisition of two parcels. The APNs are noted in the staff report, more commonly known as Dog Beach and related authorizations. And Number 2, adoption of Resolution 1321, authorizing staff to submit an application to LAFCO, initiating detachment proceedings for APN 652210 and related authorizations. Property would be detached from within the city. Boundary resulting in a lot being located within unincorporated County of San Luis Obispo. Property is owned by the Cayuga Sanitary District, CSD. Number 3, adoption of Resolution 14-21, authorizing staff to submit a sphere of influence or SOI amendment to the San Luis Obispo Local Agency Formation Commission, that's LAFCO, and add five lots above Panorama Drive to the city's SOI. Payment of additional studies and development limitations for the APN noted and portions of the APNs noted as lots 2, 8, 7, and 6. These lots are owned by Chevron Corporation. I'll also note, I've had some folks indicate a desire to speak longer than three minutes. I'll go ahead and add a minute to public comment. So if you would like to speak for four minutes, please let me know when you're making a public comment, and we'll set the clock at four minutes. If not, we will set the clock at the traditional three minutes. So thank you for that. With that, I will turn it over to our Community Development Department, I believe Mr. Graham. Are you presenting, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Heding. Let me share my screen. I have a presentation. Okay. So I think this has been an item that's been a long time coming. It's one where we've probably been working on this for over five years. I mean, once we became aware that Chevron was interested in divesting themselves of their property that's located at the north end of Morro Bay. And I think the property's totaled a little over 3,000 acres, so a huge opportunity there. And so in recognizing that, you know, several entities came together to look at opportunities for preservation of some portions of that property, including the city of Morro Bay, Trusher Public Lands, Cayuga Sanitary District, Cayuga's Land Conservancy, Chevron, Land Conservancy of San Luis Obispo, Morro Bay Open Space Alliance, Coastal Conservancy, County of San Luis Obispo. So a lot of folks in the mix here in looking at opportunities on that property for preservation and potential future access for the public. This is an overall map that we received from Chevron the other day that kind of shows their overall holdings. It totaled at some around the neighborhood of 3,000 acres. The areas that are not colored in are ones or properties that have been sold. You kind of see that lightly in light text as sold there. The areas in blue over here, this is what you see identified on the map is Phase 1 of the conservation effort. This is Lot 1 here. And that was acquired maybe a little over a year ago. maybe a little over a year ago by the County of San Luis Obispo. They acquired both the piece here and the portion of the beach. It totals about 12 acres, you know, on the west side of Highway 1. You know, and that was to, you know, help serve as a, you know, a point of separation between the communities of Morro Bay and Cayucas. Down here towards the screen here, you see a lot here. This is, this is lot, this is the northern, whoops, this is the northern Dog Beach lot, and this is the southern Dog Beach lot here. Those are the ones that are the subject of tonight's meeting. The lot in this location belongs to the Cayucas Sanitary District, and that's the lot that's proposed for detachment, which means it would be taken out of the city limits and placed back in the county. And then you see the five panorama lots here on the lot, which is proposed to be included in the city's sphere of influence. And you see another color over here in yellow, and this is a future phase for conservation that the conservation groups are looking at. You know, that's the next idea for a takedown of that area to provide trails and public access in that location. As I said, there was a lot of folks involved with that. And the kind of Phase 1A was the county's acquisition of that Lot 1 that I previously described. The Phase 1B would be described in the MOU that the city entered into, that the council authorized the city to enter into in January of 2020. And that involved the Cayucas Sanitary District, Chevron, the city of Morro Bay, and the Trust for Public Lands. And while it was a non-binding memorandum of understanding, it was meant to outline the process where we would do the preservation for the Dog Beach lots coming to the city, the detachment for the CSD, and then the SOI amendments for Chevron. Again, a lot of moving parts. And it's this MOU that resulted in the preparation and it gave the guidance to provide the staff report this before you this evening and the resolutions that are proposed for adoption to move these items forward. Resolutions 12-21, again, authorizes the mayor to sign the purchase and sale agreement for the two Dog Beach lots. Both lots transferred to the Cayucas Sanitary District. They purchased them, I think, in 2019. And so the purchase and sale agreement is between the city of Morro Bay and the CSD. Lot 6 Southwest is located within city limits, and the northern lot is located outside the city limits, but within the city's sphere of influence. The reason for that lot being located within the city's sphere of influence was to allow a future control and potential annexation of that property into the city limits and potential future control of that area by the city. The city went through a sphere review in 2007 with the, with LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission. And the city had a very large sphere of influence at that time. And when LAFCO completed the review, they determined that the city did not have adequate resources, really water, to build out to that, that sphere of influence. And so they really snapped those boundaries back to the city limit lines, with the exception of an area that's at the south end of town that's in the bay, and one that's at the north is this area for Dog Beach. And the reason was because the citizens of Morro Bay requested that it be allowed to remain in the city's sphere of influence, so it could be maintained and potentially in the future brought into the city. There is a right to repurchase that's attached to Lot 6 Southwest, and that right is retained by Chevron. And that was retained when they purchased the property from, when the CSD purchased the property from Chevron. Chevron has agreed to relinquish the repurchase right if the city authorizes submission of an application to LAFCO for the sphere amendment to include the five panorama lots in the city's sphere of influence. Purchase price for the property is $338,000, or $338,050, sorry. Coastal Conservancy providing $150,000 of that. And it looks like I have a typo there. The Land Conservancy would provide the $188,040, which is the remainder, which is $188,050. Sorry, again, that was a typo. Apologize for that. We, getting the money from the Coastal Conservancy, the grant agreement does require that Chevron, the repurchase right from Chevron be removed prior to the release of funds. And the city's acquisition of the two Dog Beach lots would also pave the way for the, what you've all heard of for quite a while, the Morro Bay to Cayucas multi-use bike and pedestrian trail. Once the city would, is able to acquire those properties, and that would pave the way for that project to move forward, which would provide a great recreational opportunity between the two communities. Resolution 14-21 authorizes staff to submit an application to LAFCO for the amendment for the city's sphere of influence to include those five panorama lots. This has been discussed for many years, not only as part of the conservation effort, but also as part of the city's update to its general plan, local coastal program. Early on, this was identified as an area of concern, especially since Chevron was looking to divest themselves of the property. And through that public outreach process, the concern came forward that we want to preserve the backdrop of the city, meaning the hillsides at the north end of town. And this was one way to do that. And the draft sphere of influence map in the draft GPLCP update does show this area, these five lots, as future, as a future sphere of influence area for the city. Again, those lots are owned by Chevron, and it is their intent in the future to annex them into the city. Each lot would accommodate a single home. So you get five homes. Potentially, there'd be the ability for them to have accessory dwelling units. I don't know that the city has much say there. The state, you know, with recent legislation, has really made accessory dwelling units hard, it makes it hard for cities to deny them. They're really, the intent by the state is to make them almost by right decision, really, with the way they've been going. The homes would begin to be restricted to the lower area on the map in this slide, so that area that's in yellow, and roughly corresponds to the 200-foot contour interval. That way, preserving the backdrop of the city and the hillsides behind that. Resolution 13-21, I want to go back to the slide. So, and this doesn't show specific building footprints on each of these lots because Chevron hasn't gotten to that level of detail as it relates to development. So what that means is they would need to come in and do a discretionary permitting process, identify where the building footprints for these lots could be located. And in order to move them, in order to move them forward. So that would be through the coastal development permit process, conditional use permit process. And because there are concerns identified in the city's general plan related to slope stability in these areas, they would be required to do site-specific geologic analysis in those areas to determine the appropriate locations for building pads. And then the areas outside of that would be deed restricted to open space. Resolution 13-21 authorizes staff to submit an application to LAFCO for the detachment of Lot 6N. That's the lot that's on the east side of the highway. It's owned by the Cayucas Sanitary District that houses their sewer infrastructure. Some of their sewer infrastructure, I think if there's a lift station, maybe some other improvements on there that serve the sanitary district. That would be detached from city limits, so then would go from the city to the county. We did receive, you know, a few questions. I tried to answer some of them as part of the presentation. But the overall fees to LAFCO for the detachment would be $3,500. The sphere of influence application to LAFCO is $3,500. And the closing costs associated with the purchase of Dog Beach are $600. Both, well, the CSD has agreed to split the cost of the application to LAFCO for the detachments with the city. And there's also some desire to see if we can't get a fee waiver from LAFCO because this is for conservation purposes. The sphere of influence application to LAFCO, representatives from Chevron have indicated that they'd likely be willing to pay the $3,500 for the application fee. There were some questions raised about water rights that were discussed in the grant deed that was between Chevron and the CSD. There is a restriction in there. When the CSD purchased the Dog Beach lots from Chevron, it limits withdrawal of water to eight acre feet per year. That same restriction for those two lots would transfer to the city upon sale. Not that we plan on pulling water out of it, but that restriction is on there and would get transferred to the city. I spoke to the slope stability issues previously. And sort of wrapping up, again, the kind of key benefits to this all is the continuation with the purchase of the Dog Beach lots, the city, the county would be able to move forward with the Morro Bay to Cayucas Connector Trail. Dog Beach and its use will be preserved and then managed by the city. The five panorama lots would come into the sphere of influence. They're eventually annexed, then we would have deed restrictions on them that preserves the upper portions of those lots, so they would remain undeveloped as they are today. And so that would be the benefit of that. I think that is my last slide. Other than the recommendation for the item before you this evening is for adoption of Resolutions 12-21, 13-21, and 14-21. You would have to make separate motions, separate seconds, and have separate votes on each of those resolutions to move them forward. And with that, I will stop sharing my screen, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Very much appreciated. And thanks for the well-articulated staff report. Of course, we've had this concept, conceptually, before council a number of times. I know it's been contemplated in our new general plan, local coastal plan update, discussed there on a number of occasions, and also most recently at Planning Commission, but also previously a number of times at the Planning Commission. And so not necessarily a new concept, but one not without questions, I think, from our community. So again, thanks for your presentation. I appreciate that greatly. I'm going to go ahead and start with council questions and ask Councilmember Davis to begin. Councilmember Davis, your question, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as I said previously, I've taken many of these questions from the emails that we have received from our residents. So I'll begin. The Pismo Preserve is a popular recreational area operating under the management of the Land Conservancy. Who would provide similar management oversight for the Chevron property?
That's a good question. Really, you're probably talking about the Phase 2 portion of this. As I mentioned before, the Phase 1A and B, A was the county's purchase of Lot 1. So they will, you know, they will deal with Lot 1 and have, you know, regulatory authority over what happens on those, on those lots, both the piece on the west and east side of the highway there. And then if the city were to acquire the Dog Beach lots, then we would, we would manage those. And there would be a requirement to put together a management plan to indicate, you know, how that property would be managed into the future. The Phase 2 piece is really the, the area that kind of extends out Alma Paul Creek and up further into the Chevron properties. And that would be something similar to the Pismo Preserve. And the Land Conservancy of San Luis Obispo is actively working with Chevron to acquire that property to do something very similar to what they did at the Pismo Preserve. And that's to provide hiking and biking trails in that location, looking at different options for providing multiple access points to that area so that the Delmar Park area would not be, you know, as impacted from a traffic standpoint.
Thank you. And about the panorama lots, what is the potential that building homes on the proposed panorama lots would cause land to slide?
So another good question. Certainly, you know, we, in our general plan, that area is identified as an area of concern related to geologic stability. General plan calls out that if you're doing development in that area, that you would do site-specific geologic reports for each of those areas to determine appropriate locations for building pads or building locations. I guess there's also the potential, you know, if we're annexed in the future, that they could do that analysis and determine that it might be better to, you know, cluster the five homes on, you know, one or two of the lots and leave the other three completely vacant and undeveloped. That would certainly be a potential in the future, I would suppose, that would come out of that analysis.
Okay. And what is the city's legal exposure for damages that might occur from future landslides from the panorama lots on the private homeowner lots below?
I'll, I'll start the answer, and then I'll, I'll call a friend. These are privately held lots, and so they would be the responsibility and the liability would, you know, attached to the private property owners. Right now, it's Chevron. It could be some other entity in the future. And I will turn it over to Mr. Newmeyer to expand upon what I just said. Chris, we can't hear you.
Chris, you're muted.
Or your mute's not showing up, though. Maybe your microphone? Still can't hear you.
See if I can give him a visual. Chris, can't hear.
You know, he understands that, I think.
We should be getting signal from him. If he wants to try to call in, we can try to...
Chris, try to watch your call in. And then, Ms. Councilmember Davis, you want to go to your next question, and we'll come back when Chris calls in?
Sure.
Thanks.
So Scott, will future city councils have the power to increase density of the panorama lots and allow additional houses to be built on them? And that would be in addition to the ADUs that are already allowed by right?
So, so the intent would be, will, you know, through the site-specific analysis, we'll identify the building footprints, meaning where they can have their improvements. And then everything outside of that area would be deed restricted to open space. So they wouldn't be able to add more homes there because it would be deed restricted open space.
Okay. Chris yet? Chris, are you there? Sorry, council member. Go ahead.
Sure. What costs will the city incur to apply to LAFCO to add the panorama lots to the city's sphere of influence?
The, the application fee to LAFCO for the sphere amendment is $3,500. And representatives from Chevron have indicated that they'd likely be willing to cover that cost.
Will the city have to pay for preparation of an EIR to apply to LAFCO?
No, an EIR wouldn't, wouldn't be required.
Okay. And then about Dog Beach, does the California Coastal Conservancy grant require that dogs be prohibited from Dog Beach in order to protect snowy plover habitat?
No, the, our grant agreements with the Coastal Conservancy for the $150,000 they'd be lending to the purchase, or providing to the purchase, sorry, you know, requires us to develop a management plan for the area. That management plan would cover resource management and preservation. It would be, it would cover public access and probably parking as well. I know there's some concerns related to parking over in that area and how that functions. So the management plan would look at those types of things. The Coastal Conservancy, you know, has, has no desire to prohibit dogs from the beach. We've had numerous conversations with them to that end.
Okay. And do we have assurance that the Coastal Commission and state parks will continue to allow dogs on Dog Beach after the city takes ownership of the property?
State Parks has no authority. Would be, if the city were to acquire it, would be the city's property, and state parks wouldn't have anything to say about it. The Coastal Commission wouldn't really either unless the city pursued some sort of development on the property that, that triggered coastal development permit where they could add conditions to it. But, you know, the Coastal Commission's all about public access. And I think even, I think some of the CSDs, the Cayucas Sanitary District approvals for their sewer infrastructure include requirements to allow public access. And that went through the permitting process with Coastal. So they're required to maintain that and record easements over that to allow that to continue.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the work that you, you and your staff have done on this over the past few years, and appreciate your answers tonight. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Heller, sir, do you have questions?
I do, thank you very much. And Councilmember Davis asked many of them, but I'll go ahead and with my list here. And we're talking about the resolution 1221 at this point, right, Scott Graham?
Well, we, we covered all of them, they're all part of the items. So you can, you can ask questions related to any of them.
Okay, great. So in looking at the map here showing those parcels, and I'm referring to 6NW and 6SW, they appear like they're kind of little slivers there. Is that really the shape of the parcels or are they contiguous from the bluff to the waterline?
If you want, I mean, I could reshare my screen and show you the lots one more time. Would you like that?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, just give me one second here.
Okay.
And Mr. Graham, I did have the attorney's phone number calling in on the attendees and I was trying to unmute him. But I don't believe he unmuted himself on his phone and he has just hung up again. So if he tries to call on the attendees list, should I try again to get him live?
I'm, I'm gonna hold him for the very end and bring him back to answer the question.
Okay, sounds good, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Heller, so you're, you're correct. The, one of the maps doesn't really show that area accurately. The, the, the north lot is, is this lot here. There's a gap.
Okay.
And there's the, the south lot.
Okay, so who owns the gap?
The gap? That is a great question and I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't raise this as part of my presentation. The, the gap is, is owned by Chevron and will continue to be owned by Chevron. That's the head wall structure where the pipes go out into the water.
Okay.
And there is some, there is some contamination there. And that lot can't be conveyed or sold until they have that cleaned up. And so that is, you know, on the, you know, list of items for them to, to take care of before they can divest themselves of that piece of property. And that, and they do have that intent to do that, so.
Okay, okay. And then my next question is the, this lot 6NE, which is where Cayucas has their pump station, I believe, but it's city property, but Cayucas owns it, is that correct?
It's, it's, so it's this piece, my, where's my, it's this piece here, if you can see it.
Right.
That lot is owned by the, the CSD. And it is the northernmost lot in the city of Morro Bay. They're requesting that we detach it from our city and put it back in the county. And so we're looking to do that. And that's part of the, the, the request here this evening for you is to allow us to submit the application for the detachment. And then I'll be coming back at a future action to take the lot that's right across from it, which is the northern Dog Beach lot. I'll be requesting authorization to submit an application for annexation to bring that lot into the city.
Okay, is there a benefit to the city by detaching that lot where Cayucas has their?
So a benefit, I don't know that there's a benefit or not. There's a benefit to the CSD really because it, it really convolutes their permitting processes for their sewer infrastructure because you have to get permits from the Coastal Commission, the county, and the city of Morro Bay. Unless we agree to a consolidated permitting process. And so I think they don't really want that headache anymore. They're just like, hey, can we get our piece of property out of the city so we don't have to do that anymore? And so it's part of, you know, the negotiation for the land, you know, sale, swap, whatever you want to call it.
Okay. And do we know what Cayucas paid for the two parcels on the, that we're talking about, the Dog Beach parcels?
The exact same amount we're paying.
I see, okay. I'm gonna list here. I'm gonna bear with me a minute. I do try to look closely at the questions that came in via agenda correspondence and so forth. So you mentioned that the deed would be restricted for open, open space above the areas that are indicated where the single-family dwellings would be allowed on the five parcels?
Yes, that's correct. So here, on the map on the right here, you can see the area in yellow. This is what they'll, they'll attempt to, you know, they'll do site-specific geologic analysis to determine a building footprint in that yellow area, which is just below or approximately below the 200-foot contour, to look at locations for the homes there. And then often do, again, those site-specific geologic studies to determine that. They'll end up with a building footprint that comes out of that, and then we would be deed restricting the rest of it.
Okay, so that is part of the application to LAFCO?
Well, our resolutions that say that will go to, will go to LAFCO, correct?
Okay, so I guess, I guess my concern, not being completely familiar with the annexation process, when do those deed restrictions actually get approved?
Well, we would likely do it when they determine the location for the building footprints. It doesn't make any sense to do it before that because we don't know where the building footprints would be. So.
So is that, is that part of the application to LAFCO, the initial application? Or is that part of the annexation process?
It could be part of the annexation process or part of the discretionary process for issuing permits, coastal development permits, conditional use permits for the development on those lots.
So I guess. Go ahead.
So when it, if it moves forward to annexation, the annexation portion of it would tell that story and then the permitting process would implement that, so.
Okay.
Just like the sphere of influence amendment does, it kind of tells the story too. It's in the resolution that says, this map is in the resolution as an exhibit, you know, that says this is what we're looking to do. And so everybody's clear on what the expectation is here.
Okay, so I guess, okay. Let's see here. So the resolution will basically define the single-family residence in the open space area. And that typically is not modified or changed throughout the annexation process? Am I understanding that correctly?
So the resolution that goes along with the sphere of amendments, again, includes this same map, the full map, not just the excerpt from it. And, and so this is, and then it has languages associated with it that tells you like, what we're trying to do is keep the lot, you know, keep the development of the lower portions of it. And then we would, and it, and the resolutions indicate that and then have this map that shows that. We would fine tune it once we get the site-specific analysis to determine where appropriate building footprints would be. And that's when we would deed restrict the rest of it. And that's what the, what the resolution indicates.
Okay. And then, let's see. Let's see. So going back to the, the Dog Beach lots, what, what liability does the city take on if we, if we buy those parcels and it becomes the Morro Bay's Dog Beach?
I mean, we would, I mean, I'm gonna also do the call a friend thing here, assuming Chris is available yet. But in general, we would take on similar liability that we have for the other portions of our beaches.
Okay, so if there's an incident out there, our, our police department or fire department or would have to respond? And if there are trash issues, trash issues, our city would have to take care of those as well, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Let's see here, thank you for bearing with me. I had more questions, something I have time to ask here. So we could, we could, if we wanted to, buy the Dog Beach lots and not detach the lot that the CSD owns. But I guess there's no particular reason to, to not detach it. Am I, am I missing something or?
Well, I, I, I don't, I don't, so yeah, I mean, I suppose we could do that. I don't know that CSD would sell them to us if we didn't do the other piece.
Okay.
Right, it's the negotiation, this is part of the process that we've outlined first in the MOU from, you know, 2020. And then now moving that forward and making that actually happen, the, the concepts that were in that MOU today, so.
Gotcha. And I'm assuming also, correct me if I'm wrong, that the Coastal Conservancy and the Land Conservancy of San Luis Obispo County would not be real happy if we approved the first two resolutions and not the third one regarding the lots, the five lots, right?
Well, I mean, that's a, it's a fair point in that, you know, these were negotiated over time. And different entities wanted different things. And so that's, this is where we came out. And again, we, this has been, you know, kind of, you know, out there for everybody to see since 2020 when we executed the MOUs.
Right. Let's see if I have any more. I think if we wanted to put deed restrictions regarding utilities going into the open space and so forth, is that something that would be done in the annexation process?
So that is something that could be done. I, the only, you know, hesitancy I have there is, I don't know what the future holds here. You can't extend infrastructure outside the city limits without going through a LAFCO process anyway.
Right.
But it's a public process. I would note that the, that the draft sphere of influence in the, in the public or adoption draft of Plan Morro Bay, the GPL Zero Plan Local Coastal Program Update, does include in that draft sphere of influence the next row of lots as well. And that was really, again, for the preservation aspect and to preserve the backdrop of the, the city. So that would be a council decision. I can't really get much beyond that, just other than to point out that that was included for concerns related to preservation of the backdrop of the city.
Okay, I've got two more questions and then I'll give up my time here. So as part of the LAFCO application, I think before we can annex or bring properties into the city limit, we have to prove basically that we have the services and capacity to serve these five lots in this instance, right? I mean, is that something municipal service review, I think it's called? That's something we have to do, is that right?
Yeah, that's part of this process, correct.
Okay, any idea what that costs the city to do?
At this point, no. We have the analysis later, the, look at all the pieces that are involved. And I have a draft that I put together, I just.
Okay, okay. And then the other thing I know that I've heard about for many years is that in order to annex, annex property in the city limits, it requires a majority vote of the residents of Morro Bay, is that true?
I'll stop sharing my screen here. So we do have Measure F, it was approved in 1980. And it does require, the measure as adopted indicates that to annex any property into the city other than for public purposes, that you have to go through a vote of the citizens. You also have the Cortez-Ze Knox-Hertzberg Act that essentially preempts that. I mean, I'm gonna let Chris maybe speak more to that. But it, the, the, the act really indicates, like it preempts the referendum that we had that requires that. How we, how we move forward with an annexation process is going to be subject to discussion with the council, assuming we do that. And about how we, how we deal with that, that component. Because it still was voted on by the people, it's just the Cortez-Ze Knox-Hertzberg Act and court decisions related to that indicate that the authority related to determining boundaries for cities, counties, special districts lies with those entities and not with the voters, for the most part. I don't know, how, how did I do, Chris? Was that terrible?
Can you all hear me now?
Yeah.
Great. You know, I just logged out and logged back in, the old, you know, computer's not working, just turn it off.
Reboot, reboot.
Reboot. So a few questions I can address. The first one about Measure F. So as Director Graham was pointing out, the Cortez-Ze Knox-Hertzberg Act, which was passed after Measure F, it's presumed that that preempts the impact of Measure F. That doesn't mean that the city council, in its discretion, since it would need to make a discretionary action anyways for annexation, you know, they can respect Measure F as much as they want. But the state law probably acts to preempt Measure F. There is a legal analysis that's been done on that, but Measure F predates that state law. There's a number of state laws, of course, out there that slowly over the years have been taking away local control. So if and when that issue comes up, certainly could do more legal analysis on it. In regards to liability issues, there's been two questions. Councilmember Davis was asking about liability for any landslides or earth movement up there in the hills. I don't see any more or less liability for the city than they would have right now by the city putting that land in its sphere of influence. The city's not buying the property right now. And so, you know, the city's not liable for property that's privately owned. So it's not going to increase or decrease any liability and there's none right now that I'm aware of. As for Dog Beach itself, Councilmember Heller, you'd asked about whether there's some liability for Dog Beach. Are you referring to liability for dog bites or do you mean just in general or?
Well, I kind of mean both. I know in Southern California, they've had lots of problems with dog beaches. And I'm not saying we're gonna become like Southern California, but, you know, dog bites, owners disagreeing and ending in fisticuffs, you know, and, you know, did you pick up your poop after your dog? Those kinds of things can end up, believe it or not, involving police and altercations and things that are concerning a little bit.
Sure. You know, interestingly, there's a number of statutes that address some of those issues. There's a government tort immunity for dog parks where basically if there's a dog bite at a dog park, the government's not responsible for it in general. There's also a California statute, it's Civil Code 3342, which provides that the owner of a dog is responsible if a dog bites someone in a public place. And in addition to that, in general, unimproved natural areas, cities, counties, the state aren't responsible for accidents that might happen in unimproved natural areas. So in some, I don't see there being much exposure to liability for either dog bites or, you know, if, if someone's recreational activities have become excessive out there at Dog Beach.
Okay, I, I thank you for that. And one last question, respect the liability. I must admit, we take our dog there, we park. The parking seems kind of dangerous, but I'm wondering if that is a Caltrans Highway One issue? And the parcel starts behind that chain link fence, if you know what I mean, Scott Graham?
Do you know what you're talking about? It is close to the highway. In fact, you know, leading up to the meeting this evening, I was talking to our city engineer, Rob Liewick, about it a little bit. You know, there are concerns there, which is why, one of the things that we would probably address as part of the management plan that's required by the Coastal Conservancy grant would be to look at the parking issue there because there's probably some areas there where you, that get very narrow and close to the highway.
Exactly.
Yeah, that you, we probably don't want cars to park once the city, you know, takes control of that, if the council votes to do that. Now, we probably want to look at some of those areas and, and how cars, you know, enter and exit Highway One. I, I do agree that, you know, that's probably something that, you know, is worthwhile for some future study. And we would have to undertake that, I believe. And we have to look at where the Caltrans right of way ends and then the Dog Beach properties start and kind of identify what's going on there as well, so.
Right, okay. Those, believe it or not, are my questions. Thank you for your patience and, Chris, glad to have you back.
Thank you, it's good to be back.
Thanks, Jeff, appreciate it.
Thank you for the time here.
Barton, questions?
Well, thanks to Councilmember Davis and Councilmember Heller and staff and the city attorney. My, all of my questions have been answered, so thank you.
It's kind of nice not to go first, huh? Councilmember Addis, questions?
No, I'm, I'm in the same position as Councilmember Barton where most everything that I had been wondering has already been addressed.
Great, thank you so much. And I'm pretty much in the same position, but I will ask you one additional question, Mr. Graham. Can you perhaps explain how this transaction will benefit the bike or the proposed connector between Morro Bay and Cayucas and how that, that works basically?
So once the, once the city, assuming council votes to move it forward, acquires the property, then we can allow the bike path to go, to trans, to traverse, you know, those lots. And so we can make the connection to Cayucas. So right now, we don't have the ability to do that. But moving forward, you know, with the city ownership, we would be able to grant them that access through an easement. They have plans to, I think they're like 30% design plans at this point, and it might be more now. I haven't spoken with them recently about it. Um, but they'll be ready to start moving forward, they've completed their environmental review, um, and I think they're just, you know, doing the last tweaks to the alignment. So, um, that really is something that could move forward in the, in the near term, so it'd be exciting if that were, and a great opportunity, uh, you know, for recreation between our two communities.
Great. Thank you. That's all the questions I have due to the great questions that were asked previously. Um, I will go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for agenda item C dash one. Any member of the public wishing to come forward now, uh, please do so. Again, as I stated earlier, um, if you would like an additional minute, um, I, I received a number of requests, um, if you'd like an additional minute, four minutes, uh, please let us know upfront and we'll set the clock for four minutes. Otherwise, it will be the usual three-minute public comment. The instructions are on the screen, so with that, um, I'll go ahead and open public comment. Anthony, please, any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do see some raised hands. I'm gonna go ahead and unmute Bruce Gibson. Okay, Bruce, you are unmuted.
Welcome, Bruce.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Uh, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening to speak in support of your staff's recommendation. Um, the city is on the threshold of a really important step, uh, toward the completion of a remarkable project here, uh, a chance to protect what a, a friend of mine, Mr. Daniel Bowman of Land Conservancy, called world-class open space, and he does not exaggerate when he speaks about this particular piece of the California coast. Um, there are so many, uh, important, uh, assets that, uh, that are ready to be protected as we pursue a shared conservation vision. I mean, it, just think about it, we have a chance to put more than a mile of the concert of the California coast into public ownership, and I think this opportunity is extraordinary. Uh, within that mile, we have, of course, uh, the, one of the jewels of the, uh, North Coast, which is Dog Beach, uh, which the county is proud to, uh, own about half of, the northern half, and we've been working in close partnership with the city to make sure that, uh, uh, we come up with a coordinated management plan that keeps, uh, the uses of that beach going as, as they have. We also have the opportunity, as, uh, your staff has indicated, to complete the Morro Bay to Cayucus, uh, multipurpose bike, uh, walking trail connector. But we also have the scenic backdrop, the community separation between, uh, Morro Bay and Cayucus and any biological resources that exist of, of, of all creek and elsewhere on this property, uh, and just the, the general beauty of the, uh, of the land that, uh, that we're looking at conserving here. Um, where we are today is the testament to the power of partnership. Uh, Mr. Graham put forth a, a slide to start his presentation showing all the different entities that have been involved in this, and it's been a pleasure for me, uh, to work, uh, with you, Mayor Heding, and other members of your council and your staff in, uh, bringing this to, uh, to this, this project, to, uh, the place that it is. Look forward to, uh, further phases of this, uh, and I, uh, again, uh, wholeheartedly endorse what your staff is recommending you do. I'm also here, uh, and happy to answer any questions, uh, from the county perspective or, or any of the details that I might add, uh, some context to on the LAFCO process. So, thanks for the opportunity to comment and, uh, look forward to your decision.
Thanks, Supervisor Gibson. Appreciate you being here and appreciate all of your work on this issue as well. Um, Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. I do see Carl Schottler, it looks like. Uh, I'll go ahead and, Carl, you are unmuted.
Welcome, Carl.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Uh, my, my name's Carl Schottler. I, uh, my wife and I own a condominium in the Zanzibar Terrace Condominiums at the north end of the city, adjacent to Lot 33 of the, uh, the Chevron properties. Uh, we're not opposed to the sphere amendment and the potential annexation of the five Chevron parcels, so, however, the diagram does show potential home site for Lot 35 that wraps entirely around the west toe of the hill immediately basant behind the Zanzibar Terrace onto some very steep slopes that would require a significant amount of, uh, grading to develop. Um, I would, uh, I would recommend that, uh, the building area for Lot 33 be, uh, limited to lands that front immediately onto Blanca, Panorama, or Upper Zanzibar Street. Uh, I measure there's over a, a thousand feet of frontage on those streets for Lot, uh, 33. And along with that, recommend the potential for home construction that stretches around the west, uh, front of the, the hill there behind the homes and Zand, Zanzibar condominiums be, uh, eliminated from the diagram. Uh, that portion of the hill behind Zanzibar is fairly steep with slopes steeper than thirty percent and even higher, and to get behind the condominiums would require cutting and grading a driveway that's at least over four hundred feet, uh, feet long. Uh, it seems to me there's plenty of area, uh, for Lot 33 with, uh, lower slopes that would result in less grading and damage to the hill sides and the view shed of ours and many other, many other homes. Uh, might be a little bit early in, in making this recommendation. I, I recognize this as the first, uh, first step in a long process, but, uh, just wanted to get that, uh, thought across. So with that, uh, thank you for your time and your public service.
Thank you, Mr. Schottler. Uh, Anthony, next public comment, please.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Carol Truesdale. Okay, Carol, I've unmuted you.
Welcome, Carol.
Thank you. It's been quite a while. Uh, thank you, Mayor, for taking my call, and specifically for, uh, 14 dash 21. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. There's several concerns that I have. This seems like a really good buy for, um, Chevron in the sense that, um, there's no current utilities on the five lots and the county has no intention to supply it. Number two, why would the city of Morro Bay want to embark on an SOI for five lots? Because Chevron already knows that these lots are unbuildable and from geological surveys that have been made, and very few insurance companies will even sure any build out on there. And why would we go give away our precious resources of our water, police, and fire for something that is so unstable? Everything sounds really good, hey, this wonderful land preservation, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah, I would feel a lot better if those five lots were given to the city of Morro Bay by Chevron stating that, um, we'd like to have you keep these, uh, lots in perpetuity so that the people can enjoy the open space. Thank you very much for taking my call.
Thank you, Carol. Um, next public comment, Anthony, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Donald Hedlund. Okay, Donald, I have unmuted you.
Welcome, Donald.
Are you there, Donald?
Hello, can you hear me?
There we go.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff. My name is Donald Hedlund. I would like to address the city council regarding Agenda C1 for the record. I've lived on Panorama Drive for thirty-one years. My wife and I are not in favor of the city moving forward with Resolution Number 14 dash 21 to bring five lots, Chevron Panorama Drive lots into the sphere of influence. The Chevron property located above Panorama Drive has a history of landslides. Allowing homes to be built on the hillside will contribute to an already unstable hill. These actions by the city will put the lives of citizens and homeowners in harm's way. We submitted two maps from the internet to report the landslide history and risks associated with proposed five identified Chevron Panorama lots. If the council members choose to move forward with Resolution Number 14 dash 21, we ask that you place a deed restrictions in perpetuity for each of the five Chevron Panorama lots that includes the following. Number one, limiting those lots to one residential unit per lot. Number two, the five lots cannot be subdivided into smaller lots. Number three, residential units to be built below the two-hundred-foot elevation. And number four, there will be no utility easement allowed through each of the five lots to hire and more inland Chevron property. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Donald. Appreciate that. Uh, next public comment, Anthony, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see one more hand raised. Uh, Betty Windholtz. Okay, Betty, I've unmuted you.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. I, I'm gonna ask for four minutes, just in case I don't stop talking.
Let me, uh, there we go, we got the four-minute clock up.
Um, I still have not seen, and I would like to, if I need to request, uh, but through a PRA, um, why we have not seen the conservation restriction agreement, to know exactly what it is that, uh, we are signing with in order to receive the grant from the Coastal Conservancy. And I don't know if there is a similar restriction or not from the other grant, uh, giver, uh, in the county. And so those are still unknowns to me, and I'd like to know about them. I, as illustration of the last two comments, um, regarding concerns about landslides and hillslides, um, several years ago, and I wanna say ten to fifteen years ago, there was a debate in the county about whether the, the county should purchase the Seven Sister Peaks and take them out of private ownership in order to put up trails and do other things up there, because there was trespassing going on and, and litter and things like that. The conclusion was that those peaks would be better preserved if let, left in private hands. And as you can see, over the last ten to fifteen years, that has remained true. Um, if they're under private ownership, there is no development, because it's by geology, you can't develop it. And I think that same concept is true with these hills. Um, we don't need to protect these hills for our view shed or other reason, because geologically, they're not buildable. And so there really is no reason to purchase them. And I would say the same, uh, idea is true for Dog Beach in the respect that we have prescriptive rights. It doesn't matter if Chevron owns it, or Cayucus, or the city even, we will always have prescriptive rights and there's not a point to purchasing them. And so I think it's important to consider how those lots will end up, how the risk for the city will happen. Do we want, as the previous speaker said, want our fire and police resources to have to be responsible for a burn on the top of that hill? Uh, currently, that would be a county issue, and you're bringing this burden into the city for city residents to have to take care of. Um, I would also like to, um, say that, um, along with the deed restricted, um, Mr. Graham mentioned that that won't be changed, and Mr. Hedlund asked about that as well. But if, if you restrict the land so you can't build on other parts than on the lower, however many feet that was, I would wonder, and maybe you could answer, if the city, future city council could increase the density, even though they haven't increased the amount of land. Um, the concern, um, uh, the last concern I think I would express would be about, um, what Mr. Graham said now and what I heard on the Ambosa, uh, recording, was that the city may feel comfortable in overriding the Citizens Initiative F, uh, when they said you cannot or will not go to annexation without coming to us. And yet, the city staff may feel quite comfortable that they can do that legally. So my question to the city council, that probably won't be to you, but it could be, um, will you morally feel comfortable going against the Citizens Initiative, saying, no, you have to come to us for permission, or will you take us to court and, uh, try to win it there? Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Um, Anthony, next public comment, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay. Myself, there we go. Thank you so much. If we could take down the shared screen, um, we'll go ahead and move forward with, uh, recommendation and debate. Thanks again, uh, Mr. Graham and all of your staff for your work on this, um, a number of years in this coming to council and putting all of this together. Uh, we very much appreciate that. Appreciate the cooperation of the county and all the agencies that were mentioned, um, in, in, um, working to bring this recommendation forward. Um, also wanted to thank, especially, um, Morro Bay Open Space Alliance for hosting a community event to get input and add further explanation, and for their, um, uh, letter and continuous, um, um, support of maintaining open and expanding open space in, in our county and our city. With that, I will bring it back to council after all of those thanks and, and ask, uh, oh, by the way, we did have, um, a, we do have a council subcommittee, um, on this issue that's been meeting for some time, myself and Councilmember Davis are the members. And, uh, because of that, I'll ask, uh, Councilmember Davis to lead us off either with a recommendation, discussion, and or both.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, as you did, I want to compliment the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance for the thoughtful and thorough presentation that they made Sunday evening about the Chevron property acquisition. I wish we could provide that depth of background on every agenda item. I was on the General Plan Advisory Committee in August 2016 when David Fitzgerald came to tell us that Chevron intended to sell thirty-three hundred acres of unspoiled land right next to city limits. Their hope was to get the city interested in partnering with conservation organizations to raise the money to buy the property. I immediately wanted this for Morro Bay. We discussed it at G-PAC and agreed that the property should be added to Morro Bay's planning area. That provided notice that the city wanted to have influence in its future development and was considering it for inclusion in our sphere of influence and possible future annexation. After I was elected to city council, I asked Mayor Hines if I could work with him to bring the property under public ownership. And at that time, I wrote down a simple statement of what I wanted to accomplish. My goal is that the Chevron property should be publicly accessible under responsible management. It's a measure of the value of this property and its popularity that the money has been raised and terms agreed to in less than five years. Daniel Bowman told us Sunday evening that land conservation agreements typically take decades to accomplish. And yet, here we are tonight, a mere blink of an eye since David Fitzgerald came to G-PAC with his proposition. This is one of my best days in public service, and I'm incredibly proud to be part of the community of players who brought us to this decision tonight. As the mayor specified, or maybe it was Scott, who specified that each resolution needs to be moved separately. So I will begin by moving that city council adopt Resolution Number 12 dash 21, authorizing the mayor to sign the PSA, subject to such non-substantive or minor modifications or amendments as may be necessary to complete the transaction, and subject to the city attorney's approval, have the form for purchase of the two Dog Beach lots, APNs 065 dash 022 dash 011 and 073 dash 075 dash 016. Payment of city's closing costs and city manager to negotiate and execute related and necessary instruments in a form approved by the city attorney and take further actions as may be reasonably necessary to complete the transaction.
I'll second that.
You take it, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, motion by Councilmember Davis to approve staff recommendation number one, second by, uh, Mayor Heding, and I'll go ahead and ask if there is any further discussion.
I have a few comments.
Yes, please. Councilmember Addis.
Well, I do, I wanna thank staff as well as the subcommittee yourself and Councilmember Davis. I wanna thank Ambosa that was at the event or, um, online for the event that they held, and it was, uh, incredibly informative. And I hope those that are asking questions will take the time to, uh, go back and watch that event once it's posted, because many of the questions that were asked this evening are answered in depth in that presentation. And for me, even though I've known about this project for a long time and I toured the Chevron property, um, at the invite of Ambosa when it was first getting going, seeing that event re clarified a number of things for me. So, I hope that when that's posted, folks will go, uh, take a look. I wanna also- I want to also thank Supervisor Gibson for coming tonight, but his comments and his work over time, as well as the Trust for Public Land and the Cayucas agencies that have been involved with this. And from my perspective, when I campaigned for city council, part of my campaign hinged on the promise to protect and promote our coast. And that's exactly what this project does. It's another step forward in protecting what is fantastic about our area, which also has potential for economic benefit for all of us. So I'm excited that we are making movement. And I also want to call out that I think this is a true example of the promise of inter-agency collaboration and when leaders step up to work together to get something done and when we put action at the forefront. And I'm excited to preserve Dog Beach as a wild space. Like Councilmember Heller, when we had a dog, I used to take her there and spent many hours there. And I'm incredibly excited to see the possibility of accessing the hills. It was one of my great disappointments when we moved here, having come from an area that had a lot of public access open space to an area that was surrounded by open space that the public cannot access. And to be here for 20 years and now get to begin to work on moving something like this forward is a huge win for Morro Bay. So for that reason, I support this motion and plan to support the next two that I hope will come forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Appreciate that. Other comments? If not, I'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
And Mayor Hedy?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
Councilmember Davis, do you want to continue?
Yes, I move that council adopt Resolution Number 13-21, authorizing staff to submit an application to LAFCO, initiating detachment proceedings for APN 065-022-010, removing the parcel from within city limits and returning it to the unincorporated area of the county of San Luis Obispo and city manager to take further actions as may be reasonably necessary for submission of a complete application.
Second. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
And Mayor Hedy?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis.
I move that city council adopt Resolution Number 14-21, authorizing submission by staff of an application for a sphere of influence amendment to LAFCO, adding the five lots above Panorama Drive owned by Chevron to the city's sphere of influence. Payment for any additional studies that may be needed for the application and development limitations.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Davis for Staff Recommendation Number Three. Second by Mayor Hedy. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
And Mayor Hedy?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thanks again for all of the excellent work on the part of staff. Thank you, Councilmember Davis, for your work on the subcommittee over the years. Thank you, Supervisor Gibson, for your work, all the agencies that I've mentioned. I do believe this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us, as Supervisor Gibson said, to preserve over a mile of the most beautiful coastline in the state of California. I also want to make note that I have listed and taken down the concerns of those that do have concerns as we move forward, and we'll make sure that those issues are debated in the future when the time is appropriate for those. And so, again, thank you. This is an exciting moment for myself as well, and I appreciate the robust interaction and questions that we had with staff. And with that, that ends this item. That will bring us to Item C-2. This is a review of options for improvements to public trash and recycling receptibles and public restroom management in the Embarcadero and Morro Rock parking lot areas. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins, our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members and members of the public. And I guess I'm somehow able to speak on this topic as being the interim Public Works Director as well as we're going through the recruitment to place an individual in that role. So I spoke in with the Public Works team to get some history on this. Obviously, we went through a very interesting summer last year. I also spoke with my colleague at Pismo Beach, who had a similar experience, as well as some friends up in Santa Cruz and somebody we know dearly, who's now up at Truckee, to get their take on things as well since we all experienced a pretty significant trash impact last summer. So the recommendation here really boils down to providing more staff out on the weekends when we have the largest impact or largest crush of visitors during the quote-unquote "peak" season, which seems to be extending earlier and later into the year. So we want to be prepared to take on this issue with a full esteem and to make improvements as we go. But having additional part-time staff will allow us to be more nimble and to react more quickly and also have more, just more service overall in the impacted areas of the Embarcadero and the Rock Lot, Rock Parking Lot and Coleman Beach area as well. The recommendation is to be able to fund those positions. It could be plural, through Tourism Business Improvement District funds and the general fund, in essence, splitting it almost in half, probably a little bit more on the general fund side, where T-Bid would cover the costs for April, May, and June, the rest of the fiscal year. And then City would pick up the costs for July, August, September, October, and potentially in November, depending upon what the tourist season looks like. The fiscal impact for this recommendation is somewhere between $15,000 and $25,000 for this upcoming peak season, with $10,000 coming from T-Bid and the rest from the general fund. No surprise, and really don't need to provide a ton of background on this since we all experienced it last summer, but even years prior to that, we'd seen an increase in the number of visitors to Morro Bay. You know, some of that's because of the good work of the tourism marketing, word of mouth, and just the fact that people have been coming here for years. It's getting hotter in the valley, and this has just been a place for people to come to for generations, and we're seeing an increase over time. Some of the weekends, especially the holiday seasons or whenever it's really hot in the valley in the summer, the Rock Lot becomes full. Sure, that means revenue for our hoteliers, our restaurants, our retail, revenue to the city. But the flip side of that coin is that it does put significant pressures on city services and impacts the quality of life of our residents, particularly around the more visible aspects of trash, litter, and restroom issues. So the city has been making a concerted effort to stay in front of that. But last year was a year like no other with the COVID-19 pandemic and restrictions or the outright banning of indoor dining in our popular tourist destination areas led to a proliferation of trash and litter. Even though we had increased capacity in our system, it just was overwhelmed, and we had to make adjustments midstream by adding more receptacles, more staff, and launching the Trash Heroes campaign to really try to encourage the good behavior we wanted to see. In addition to that, the city also had made improvements to the Rock restroom by installing automatic flushers and improving the floor so it would be easier to clean by our consolidated maintenance crew, and added porta-potties, both in the Coleman areas. We had to close the Coleman restroom, added porta-potties out at the Rock Lot, and added hand washing stations to accompany those. And I mentioned the Trash Hero program. It's actually an award-winning program from a design standpoint, and we've had a lot of communities reach out to us to understand how that program works. And really, that was more to honor the community members who have stepped up for years, especially last year, to assist us in our efforts to reduce litter, raise awareness, and encourage good behavior from our visitors. So we wanted to honor our community members who have been doing this for years. We added several roll-off dumpsters and increased signage so people could easily identify what was a public trash can versus a private one. We had Harbor Patrol and Consolidated Maintenance also checking the trash cans that line the Embarcadero that are managed by Morro Bay Garbage Company. They're picked up six days a week, but not on Sundays. And so, you know, we monitor those trash cans in case they're overflowing and do our best we can to make at least three passes during the day on the weekends on those as well if we ever see any overflow to empty those. So those are sort of the approaches we've been taking over the last couple of years, but especially ramped up during the pandemic. So when we look at what's coming and expecting that there's going to be another crush of visitors, probably starting as early as next week, and we've already seen it, had a taste of it with the three-day or four-day weekend, the President's Day weekend, aligned with the, gosh, Valentine's Day. It was the Rock Parking that was already full in February. So I guess that's a sign of what's coming, so we need to be prepared. So we believe that adding additional staff is probably the more effective means of addressing this than adding a lot more capacity of trash cans, as ultimately, it just comes down to how quickly you can empty them. By adding more trash cans, that's more things to empty. There's definitely a balance point to find, and I think we did find it last year as we caught our stride midsummer after a lot of input from the community, council members, business community members. But we think adding at least one or two more part-time staff can really make a huge difference. We've also received photos from concerned residents about trash along, particularly the Embarcadero, trash cans that are again managed by Morro Bay Garbage. We think if we do another pass later at night, that might address some of the overflow issues. In addition, in talking with Public Works staff, some of those trash cans have an accompanying recycling bin that, how do I say, it becomes more of a wish-cycling bin, where it's almost 100% contaminated, and all that gets thrown away. We understand the good intentions involved with that. We can't monitor those things. We can't put a monitor on top of each one of those recycling cans and tell people what to put in where, and even with signage, it doesn't seem to make much of a difference. So as problematic as it may be from a messaging standpoint, it could be that removing those and replacing them with additional trash cans may be more effective in the long run because that all becomes garbage anyways and none of it is recycled, according to staff, and Morro Bay garbage because it's just too contaminated. So it's just something we're looking at, is sort of, can we do another pass later at night so that when our volunteers come out, they don't find big messes? It is problematic. We don't want that litter to find its way into our treasured bay or ocean or other sensitive areas in the community. So we believe, again, that going after this with an increased staff capacity would be the most effective approach. In addition, in discussing this with the Tourism Business Improvement District a week ago, we explained that part of the issue, especially when the parking lot is full at the Rock and there's traffic in both directions, it does become hard for our staff to get out to that Rock area or away from the Rock area. And so we're at the moment considering maybe purchasing a golf cart or something like that, and maybe even taking the Kubota from the police department as they're looking to upgrade that vehicle. That would allow us to utilize different means of getting out to the Rock or getting out of the Rock area, where we don't have to sit in line, which could take 20 to 30 minutes or longer, which makes it harder to be efficient in our trash pickup and restroom cleans. Our goal is to do that at least four times a day during the weekend, during the heavy or peak season. In addition, it's mentioned in this report, the Coleman Beach restroom has been shuttered due to safety concerns and will not reopen. We've been in discussions with the state around a Prop 68 grant that would pay upwards of $170,000 and change to help us upgrade that facility to a modern restroom with ADA access, ADA parking pads that could get an individual to the restroom area, potentially a second phase that includes recreational area out there as well. That's been held up because of COVID with the state, so they've extended their deadline for submittals of applications to the end of this calendar year. So that kind of gives an indication of how quickly they're going to turn things around. We were hoping that this would already be constructed by now, so COVID certainly hasn't been friendly in that regard. So we're continuing to work on developing plans and making sure we submit our application ahead of time and hoping that if we do, that they would process our application sooner than the end of the calendar year. So that's something we're going to keep an eye on. In the meantime, we definitely will put out porta-potties and wash stations and signage for the trash cans in that area. And ultimately, that project will probably, we have to have a matching source of funds for that Prop 68 grant, so we're looking at parking new funds to make up the difference or potentially some general funds, but probably not a significant amount. Project will probably come in around $250,000 to $300,000. Those are early estimations on that. So again, the T-Bid or Tourism Business Improvement District Board reviewed this same staff report by and large at their March 18, 2021 meeting. And to their credit, they had asked for this item to come to them because they understand the connection between tourism and the trash and restroom issue. From a selfish standpoint, of course, they want people who come here to come back again and have a pleasant experience, but they also realize the impacts that visitors have on our community, and so it's a two-way street. And they were supportive on a 4-1 vote to provide Tourism Business Improvement District funds to the city, up to $10,000 to support additional staffing during the peak season months. They further requested that we work with waterfront restaurants on the private trash issues that maybe could help us, and that is part of the city council goal around COVID-19 as well. And then, you know, look at maybe them picking up some of the funding in the future. That's definitely a discussion we will have with restaurants. And further, they requested that if the city does purchase an alternative vehicle, perhaps put a T-Bid logo on the vehicle to demonstrate their support for keeping our community clean. So in short, we definitely understand it's our responsibility to address this issue. We can't guarantee there will never be issues, but we do want to guarantee that we will continue to do the best we can and make improvements along the way. We believe these actions, if approved by city council, will help make those improvements and continue investment in addressing the issue. Therefore, we recommend the staff. Our city council approved the hiring of additional part-time staff from the Consolidated Maintenance Crew, who pride themselves on doing the absolute best they can. They're visible folks in our community. They care about this, and they want to do a good job. And I want to make sure I give them resources to do that. So we're asking for city council support for the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Very much appreciate your report. And addressing probably the issue that I at least receive most emails concerning our trash and restroom problems. So thanks for being proactive in addressing this.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more comment to make.
Absolutely.
My apologies, I sort of rushed through. One last thing.
No worries.
We talked about the trash recycling sort of issue on the waterfront that are managed by Morro Bay Garbage. by Moro Bay Garbage Company. But the other has been discussions about putting trashcans out by the fire pits, which line the, where cars park either to go surfing or people just to look at the waves at the Rock. That, in the past, we'd done that. We'd lined that area with trashcans, up to 15, I believe, in talking with public works staff today. There was a movement away from that because what happened was we'd experienced litter in those trashcans as well and much closer to the ocean, much more likely to wind up on the beach. So there was a movement by the city to consolidate further away from, from that ocean, A, because of litter that it created, B, because of the clutter, and C, sort of the view shed concerns. We do have the, the fire pits that are there and definitely on occasion, you will find refuge in there. And so our staff checks that when they do their rounds three times a day to empty it. I think it's the issue of what happens at night. So I think if we extend our coverage into the nighttime, we should probably be able to address that. So that was one other issue I wanted to flag. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, no worries at all. Thanks for adding that. I appreciate it. Maybe I'll start with just a few questions. Scott, the time period that you're requesting the funding for is the peak season between April and October of 2021. I'm wondering, are you planning to bring it back to council at that time for further consideration or just end the additional staffing?
You know, that's a, that's a great question, Mayor. And I think we, we sort of got to play it by ear. We certainly did during the COVID period last year. You know, we're working with Jen, Jen Calley, when she was Public Works interim director at the time. I think we're trying to be flexible about when to, if you will, pull, pull back not only additional staff resources, but also additional trashcans and porta potties and wash stations. And I think it's a bit of an art form because, you know, sometimes we have a second summer that goes all the way into November. So if, if we find that there just isn't a relinquishing of sort of the visitation, then absolutely we'd be back talking to council, you know, October timeframe about extending the program if we think it's necessary.
Great. Thank you. And are any of those costs personable or will they affect our pension liability costs?
Typically, no. We, we're talking about part-time staff and there's, there's some ancillary benefits, but no, no personable stuff as far as I know. And a lot of times, these individuals become, become full-time employees because we have turnover, not significant turnover, we do at times, and, and they sort of get to know not only the waterfront, but our park system as well and become integral members of our team. So we like to recruit from that, that pool of part-time folks.
Okay, great. And then I recall the discussion that staff presented when we considered the issue with seagulls at the Bay Shore condominium complex. And one of the things I've noted is that there are a huge, seemingly a huge increase in the population of seagulls and excrement. And am I recalling correctly that there are public health issues related to that specific problem that this mitigation with increased staffing could help decrease in terms of public health impacts?
Definitely, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a biologist by any stretch, you know, and just sort of remembering back to that item. Yeah, I know beaches at a certain level have become very dangerous from a public health standpoint, but definitely on a, from a blight or just uninviting atmosphere. We, we had it, you know, when it doesn't rain for a long time, we can start to see that build up, particularly under our streetlights. They like to kind of sit up there and just, you know, do their thing. So looking forward into this year, we probably could benefit from doing some sidewalk cleaning more frequently. There's, there's effective and environmentally safe approaches to doing so. So that's something that Mr. Matt Bishop, the supervisor of Consolidated Maintenance, and I have talked about doing.
Great. Well, thank you. Appreciate that. That's all of my questions. Councilmember Barton, do you have questions?
I do have a question. Scott, about the restroom at Coleman Park, is the, has there been any discussion about how that might be replaced? I'm thinking in terms of, there are a lot of prefab park restroom buildings and that could be, especially because the grants are being pushed so far out that that might be a way to kind of make up some lost time since they can be installed in a day or two. And I just wondered if you were considering that. Looks like it from, from your headlong.
Yeah, it's, we, we've been talking about that internally with Mr. Leibig, our civil engineer, our city engineer, a couple of different ways of going at it. And I think we would leave, we'd probably do an RFP process and put out both options that, you know, you could, as a contractor, go, go bring in a prefab, right, that has ADA and all the things we're looking for and sort of put out the specs and let them decide if that's more affordable or if it's going to be a build, build from the ground up. You know, we sort of leave it to the market. That's definitely sort of where we're thinking. But we've done some research into those prefabs and there, there's some that are on the affordable side that look really nice, that provide the ADA access and can withstand the, what can be, you know, challenging weather out there, right, that wears things down.
Other questions? Councilmember Barton?
Not for me. Thank you, Scott.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis, any questions?
Yes, semi-related. Well, first, I want to just say thank you to the Trash Sheros and especially Helen Beard, who's been sending us photos. And I think I've personally seen out there picking up trash and very much appreciate it. I know Councilmember Davis has picked up trash and Councilmember Heller has picked up trash. But semi-related, we had received a letter in September of 2020 from a Filipino-American who was asking for improvements to the historic landmark that's near the bathrooms there. And I was just wondering, at Coleman Park, and the monument has to do with Filipinos who came to the United States back in 1587. And she gave us a number of recommendations to protect the monument, but also to upgrade its location. And I was just wondering if you could speak to that since we're talking about the park itself.
Sure. I've spoken with the representative from the Central Coast region for, for the Filipino-American History Society. I'm sure I missed one letter, part of the acronym in there, but they've been great in sort of understanding, you know, the city made, did make a blunder and put, put one of our newer trash receptacles in, in closer proximity to the Rock than probably was warranted. And we erred and we definitely want to correct that mistake. And so she and I have been in conversation over email and phone for several months now. And she's been in contact with the elders for the community to try to identify a good location for the Rock that provides that, for the monument, that is, it provides, you know, greater visibility. We talked about signage for it, potentially lighting. And so it's been a very collaborative process and they haven't been able to come out because of COVID. And so she and I have been working on developing a council resolution as well to sort of reinvigorate our connection to that community because they were, this is the first place where they landed. And at that time, obviously, it wasn't the United States, but you know what I mean by that. So it's a very, it's very important to their heritage and their history. So just today, I received an email back from her and so we continue to do the work and hopefully we'll have a resolution this year on that.
Well, just in the air of showing support for the Asian-American Pacific Islander community, I look forward to, to that resolution and having that come back to us. That's it for me, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Councilmember Heller, do you have questions, sir?
I do. Thank you very much. Scott, thank you for your report. I guess the first question is, when you hire a new public works director, is trash going to become his or her responsibility?
Well, amongst many, yes, sir. I mean, ultimately, it buck stops with me whether I have a director or not. But we, it was one of the interview questions, believe it or not, for, for the panel to ask of the applicants. And like I said, in my intro comments, we are not the only city experiencing that. So I believe from a lot of the applicants I've talked to have experienced that in their, their hometowns currently. So I believe we have a really smart and innovative team as it is with Consolidated Maintenance, and it certainly will be further supported by having somebody that understands public works issues and has done that for a career unlike myself and has just stepped in to assist. So I feel pretty good about the pool of applicants we have. And so, yeah, they will definitely charge at that full speed and do everything they can to support the team.
Well, I kind of, I'm thinking it's probably going to be a good day when you hire that person that would expect the trash, which you handled quite well, I think, all things considered that have been thrown at you over the last year. And I want to applaud you for that. The wish cycling issue, recycling is, you know, been a thing for a long time. I'm not sure that we're making headway with educating the public. The market is always changing. Are you thinking about not having recycle cans or trying to educate the public more? What are your thoughts about that?
That, that's a great question. I don't feel comfortable at this time removing the bins. It's just one of those things that is so inimical to our values and just the messaging. For my generation, you know, we've been talking about this as a society, but the breakdown is real. The market breakdown is real. And the behavior is not, you know, I think you can, in certain situations, you can, you can definitely correct that behavior, especially when you have monitoring of things. But it's simply impossible to do in a large-scale setting like the Embarcadero. I'm not willing, ready to give it up, but it's just one of those things I wanted to flag for council that we have to be real about it and, you know, one of the trade-offs. If it's all winding up in the trash anyhow, perhaps another trash can is worthy of consideration. I'm just not ready to go there yet. But I wanted, again, at least bring it out as a matter of transparency. That's something we really need to think about. And it could be that a campaign is the right way to go. I, I don't want to be overly prescriptive right now. Just again, make sure you're aware of what we're thinking.
Sure. I think adding staff is exactly the right approach. Access to the trashcans, I know, has been an issue specifically at the Rock and, and the other locations that you have as well. So is a possible vehicle, golf cart type thing still part of this discussion and this agenda item?
Well, yes and no. We are, Mr. Bishop is going to talk with Police Commander Watkins about their Kubota. It's definitely a souped-up, it's not a golf cart. It's a, I don't know what you would call it. Cheap, cheap Cox is on the line, so he might be able to help me out. But it's, it has a little more capacity, weight capacity, and maybe can get around on different types of surroundings than a golf cart itself. They are, they are not cheap. I was surprised at their price tag. So we are very cautious at this point. But I don't believe we need direction right away. I think if we find something that we can, we can bring that back as a budget amendment item later on the year or through the budget process. So I just wanted to get a sense if there was support from that from council and just share that concept is what we're giving more consideration. I think we have a little bit of time, but not a lot of time to move on that.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Davis, sir, questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks so much. With that, we'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is a public comment for item C-2 on the agenda. We'll go ahead and put the instructions on the screen. And Anthony, is there any public comments, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Sean Green with his hand up. Okay, Sean, I've unmuted you.
Welcome, Sean.
Thank you, council. I wanted to specifically thank Shannon Casey, a public commenter and the agenda correspondent of Rancho Alivos Moro Bay, who spoke as a Moro Bay business owner on the Embarcadero about several properties that aren't providing public restrooms, some of which are required as part of their CUP or CDP. Some of the ones that she mentioned, she mentioned Dutchmans Marina Square, 541 Embarcadero, the Estero Inn, has restrooms that are either closed, difficult to find, or some other way hidden from the public. And I wanted to add to those, the Galley, Hofbra, Giovanni's, and the Landing, all four of which do have public restroom facilities that are nearly impossible for even those of us who walk the Embarcadero every day to find. So I think last, last year, because, because it was a trash anomaly, we have to look at the fact that the numbers of people in town last summer was actually lower than usual and that this problem is actually more systemic or cultural than it is based on numbers of people visiting the city. So I think it's, it's natural and even understandable for someone with a piece of trash in their hand who also is desperately seeking a bathroom and can't find one, for them to throw that trash on the ground. But not that that's forgivable. And similarly, when, when people come to town and they see chain-linked fences around bathrooms or, and several porta potties, it gives off a kind of carnival atmosphere, which again, pushes people in the direction of the way they shouldn't be going when it comes to trash. It's encouraging to hear Scott's comments about the Coleman bathroom, though that's way too distant in the future to make any kind of significant change now. I do think that it's necessary for whoever's in charge of the waterfront, which is difficult to really identify from an outside perspective, to do a bit of an audit of a few different things. And this is just a simple walkthrough audit, perhaps by a different department than the one control of, over control of that jurisdiction. But any restaurant that is open for business needs to have a bathroom if, for no one other than their own customers. We should encourage or prevent restaurants from putting no public restroom signage up because, again, that sends a cultural message that we don't want to send. Leaseholder sites must clear all their pathways of unpermitted signage seating and obstacles that really give off that same carnival mindset where the public, you know, this is kind of their playground, when it's not really that. And lastly, I think there's an opportunity to repurpose some of our A-frame signage that we used last summer to point people in the direction of the public restrooms that do exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate that. Anthony, next public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Erica Crawford with her hand up. Okay, Erica, you are unmuted.
So welcome, Erica.
Hi, there. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This is Erica from the Chamber. Thank you for allowing for some brief comments tonight in support of staff's recommendations to increase labor related to public restroom and trash pickup along the waterfront. In the private sector, it is often noted that the cost to recruit or to earn a new customer is far greater than the cost to retain one. The appearance of Moro Bay's economic centers matters. We get only one chance to make a first impression to secure and to retain a new customer. With data from Socal indicating a rise in visitation to our area from LA and the Bay Area, continuously ranking second and third respectively as origin markets to Moro Bay throughout the pandemic, and with the increase in domestic travel we're anticipating, given the challenges to international travel that the pandemic has brought us, we have a real chance to retain new business, new consumers to our community who will revisit us in the future. Cleanliness and convenience are critical needs for visitors and residents alike, and we are pleased to see the city stepping up its provision of these essential services for the upcoming high tourism season. We are also grateful for the lodging industry's financial support of this effort. The sum total of TOT and sales tax to the general fund is 43%, or $5.7 million in the FY 1920 budget. The modest increase in labor costs before you tonight to service those taxpayers and to retain those customers to the long-term benefit of Moro Bay's residents ought to be an easy decision. And we at the Chamber look forward to dialogue about continued improvement in service in the future. I'd also like to recognize the exceptional team at Consolidated Maintenance for their efforts, and the Harbor Director, Eric Endersby, and his team for their communication with master leaseholders and subtenants on both the trash and public restroom, restroom issues. And I need to recognize the many businesses who have already increased the number of trash receptacles that they maintain due to such an increase in to-go service that was a lifeline for them for many over the last year. And then finally, just an information item, the Chamber did produce a public restrooms and public parking map a few years back. We reproduced that last year. So we've begun distributing those maps around again in advance of the high season. These maps sort of help to share the burden and they help businesses manage and handle the volume of folks seeking the volume of folks seeking public facilities, many of them who interrupt sales transactions, things like that. So they're able to just hand this map that has a location on it of all of the city-maintained and master lease-maintained public restrooms. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Erica. Appreciate that. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue, although I did see a phone number come up, and I'm not sure if the particular caller, phone number, wanted to put their hand up, but if they wanted to, I believe they can press star nine to do so. Other than that, I do not see any raised hands left in the queue, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you so much. With that, I will go ahead and close.
The raised, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
The raised hand from the phone number just came up, so I'm going to go ahead and note that phone number ending in seven zero eight.
Thank you, welcome.
Okay, you are unmuted. Phone number ending in zero, seven zero eight. Yes, you are unmuted.
Hey. Hey, sorry, sorry to call in right at the end here. Thanks for taking my call. Longtime Morro Bay local here. I really like that we're talking about the issues of, you know, checking the bike path to Cayucus, that's great. It's always trash, you know, a lot at stake here, obviously, big tourism, big business, and I think there's a lot of talk of like, big grandiose things we can do, but there's also just like, looking at the smaller things, like the steeles pull all the trash out in the morning. So like, if the trash cans didn't allow that, there'd be so much trash in the morning. Like, why don't we just use what we have and like modify it? And then by the Rock, man, like, put trash cans out by the fire pits. People use the fire pits as trash cans, that shit blows all in the sand. It's a no-brainer, easy. I don't know, I would just like to see a city that thinks kind of more like, I don't know, smaller, simpler, look at the situation, let's just use what we have. Thanks for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anthony, any other callers, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. With that, I'll end the comment, bring it back to council, and either entertain a motion and/or further discussion.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Addis for the staff recommendation, second by Councilmember Davis. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I attended the T-Bid meeting as the council liaison, and this was a difficult vote for them. They recognized that they are collecting money that's intended for promotion, and the concept of using it for trash collection and restroom maintenance was very difficult for them to reconcile. All of the board members had serious reservations, but in the end, by a four-to-one vote, they said that their biggest concern was the fear that first-time visitors would be turned off by the trash in the dirty restrooms and would not come back, which is what Erica told us. And so the majority felt that this one-time expenditure would be a promotional tool and would help to encourage return visits. So I just, it was hard for them to come to that, but they, the need is so great that they, they did vote for it.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Other comments?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Heller.
I was testing you by putting up my hand.
I saw your hand, there you go. Sorry about, you did test me, I failed.
Now let's see if I can figure out how to lower it. Thank you for, thank you for that.
I think he was testing me as well.
So, yeah, I want to second what, well, not second, but I want to support what Councilmember Davis said. I listened in on the T-Bid meeting as well, and I applaud the T-Bid members for recognizing this issue and willing to part with some of their marketing dollars. I mean, the discussion I've had with our city manager multiple times is, nothing is more of a turnoff than a dirty city, and if I drive into a dirty city, I don't care what the view is or how good the fish and ships are, I'm not coming back. So I think the T-Bid kind of took a good position, and I thank them for that. And the discussions that Scott Collins and I have had about a vehicle that could be a marketing tool, as well as a practical vehicle that picks up trash in heavy traffic situations, I think is something we need to look at. I also talked with Scott Collins about putting an 800 number perhaps on the trash can, so if someone sees one that's overflowing, they could call that number, but it would at least put them on an answer machine or a log someplace so they'll alert, alert the city staff that there was an issue there. So there are a number of things I think that we can and need to do better, and I just put trash up there as number one. I mean, I've been picking up trash for a year, along with Councilmember Davis and others in the community, which shows it's important, it's kind of a visceral thing. I just don't like seeing trash in our beautiful city, and we tout our beautiful environment, and it's, to me, it's number one priority behind safety. So I applaud all the efforts in those directions, and I fully support this item. Thank you.
Thank you for those excellent comments. Appreciate that very much. Other comments? Hearing none, I'll just offer you my comments. I support the motion as well. I absolutely echo what each and every one of you have stated. I do believe that also this is a health and safety issue. The health and safety issue with regard to trash itself, I think we're all familiar with, but also the stegal population contributes to potential significant bacterial disease, and it concerns me greatly. I also am very concerned about image issues. I drive down almost routinely on the weekends especially, and do note a lot of the things that I receive emails occurring with regard to overflowing trash bins, dirty restrooms, et cetera. I do want to compliment our maintenance staff. I place no blame upon them for that. They're working hard. It's just a matter of having enough resources to meet the needs. And I want to recognize especially Councilmembers Heller and Davis, who are examples for trash pickup. I know maybe others have been down there, but I know on a routine basis, you folks have volunteered, but also a large number of our citizens have volunteered. And I am very grateful for our trash heroes, a number of whom have been recognized in the past, and I think we should continue that program of recognizing all of those unnamed volunteers that are down there routinely trying to keep the place clean. I also, again, want to second the notion that T-Bid had a hard decision to make, but stepped up and did make a decision realizing that first impression is key to return visits. And without a clean first impression, it will suppress, I believe, further visits by those individuals in the future. And so for all of those reasons, I do support the motion, and unless there are other comments, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes.
Great, thank you. That ends item C dash two, brings us to item C dash three. This is a consideration of resolution for a 180-day wait period, exception for Calpers retired and new tenants, interim fire chief appointment, and interim fire chief agreement with regard to Stephen Knuckles. And I will turn it over to Mr. Collins, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members and committee members. This is a hard, sort of a hard one to present on, so, you know, I'll cover that later, but what we're recommending is Council DOP Resolution Number 1521, approving the exception to the 180-day waiting period for the position of interim fire chief and approve the interim fire chief employment agreement between the city and Mr. Knuckles. Yeah, so where we're at right now, our current fire chief, Steve Knuckles, is retiring officially on March 30th, 2021, but given who he is as a person, individual, and given where we are with the COVID-19 emergency or pandemic that we're still going through, he and I have come to an agreement, we're hoping that council supports this to keep him in an interim position until we complete the recruitment process to bring on his ultimate successor. Chief Knuckles has been an extraordinary chief, leader of our community. This year has been a really hard year, and to be honest, I wouldn't have got through it without his support in the Emergency Operations Center. He's been such a force for good, not only for our city but for the county, in helping lead the vaccination effort from the logistics side, you know, working with public health really closely to understand how things are operating from the city side and making improvements, helping our business community, helping myself, you know, backing me up and being able to manage the rest of the city, knowing that we're in good hands under his leadership. He's been out in the community, you know, instrumental for passage of Measure Q and Measure E, which allows us to continue to provide public safety services to our community in an effective manner. So it is, it's hard to come to this point and know that he will be leaving our organization, but grateful that we've been able to find a way to keep him on until we do complete the recruitment. There's a lot of technical components to the staff report, but in short, given where we are with the pandemic and the executive orders that have been issued by Governor Newsom, we're allowed to exempt some of the requirements around bringing Calpers retired and new tenants onboard. You usually have to wait six months, and usually there's a limitation number of hours they can work. Those are waived under the current emergency. So what we're really looking at doing is being able to keep him on until we complete the recruitment, probably conclude sometime in July, that he would work a full-time, maybe be paid just his salary, keep the vehicle because it's integral to the work that he does as our fire chief, and it would be, would continue to be an at-will employee. He would maintain this position until we were able to onboard the new fire chief. I think you all know the value of Mr. Knuckles. I've said my piece, but I'm just so grateful that, when I came in as the city manager knowing that the fire department was in good hands, and it will be, will be hard to move on to another individual, but he set us, set us up in really good shape and the fire department in great shape. So I'm happy to answer any questions on the more general side. Of course, Dana Swanson can answer some of the more technical pieces related to the PERS part. So with that, I'll turn it over to council.
Thanks, Scott, for the staff report, very much appreciated. Let me go ahead and open it up to council questions. Let's go ahead and start with Councilmember Heller. Any questions, sir?
Chief Knuckles, I'm just wondering, who said you could retire? That's the only question I have.
He's not going to answer that.
He's not going to answer that, I know.
He's announced that you could retire.
That's the only question I have. I'll come back.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Heller, I appreciate it. Councilmember Addis, do you have questions, ma'am?
I don't have any questions. I don't really want to approve this item. Of course I will, but I'm so sad that the chief will be going, but I am sure he's going to continue to serve our area and our county, and just want to say thank you for everything that he's done, especially during COVID. I think we've benefited incredibly from his service, and I think our county has benefited incredibly, so I just want to appreciate that.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that very much. Councilmember Barton, any questions?
No questions, but just a comment. I haven't been part of the city family very long, but I've been part of other cities' families, and I have to say that Chief Knuckles has really, really impressed me with how far out of the way he's gone to help operations countywide, especially on the COVID rollout, and I've just been very, very impressed. It will be a big loss, but all things have to end, and, you know, retirement's come, and so, so I guess I'll have to allow you to go, but I've just been very, very impressed.
Thank you for those comments. Appreciate that. Councilmember Davis, sir?
Yeah, Scott, a question about the timing. Are we allowed to extend the retired and new tenant period for what you consider to be a sufficient amount of time to recruit and hire a replacement chief?
Yes, Councilmember Davis, we can. We have a year, as it were, in the contract that's being proposed. As I mentioned, I believe we will be able to conclude this by July, and provide sufficient time to have an outside individual to kind of facilitate the process, to look internally, externally for, you know, the ultimate successor, to establish community panel, professional panels, and enough time to engage fire department staff and department head team to, because they're a core part of the executive team beyond helping to run the department, so definitely wanting to get inputs from those individuals. I believe this provides us enough time to do that. But of course, it goes past July. I'm sure we can twist Chief Knuckles' arms if we need to keep him for a little longer, I'm hoping, but I believe this is plenty of time to do that.
Okay, and by requesting this 180-day waiver, we'll be able to continue without a break?
Correct, yeah, that's a great, great distinction, that is correct. We don't have to wait 180 days.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Davis. I'll reserve my comments until after public comment, so this is item C dash three. Any member of the public wishing to comment on item C dash three, that time would be now. So Anthony, do we have any public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
With that, I will then close public comment, and also will support the motion with, obviously, many mixed emotions. Chief Knuckles, you're the consummate professional. You exude technological competence. Your efforts in disaster planning and incident management, especially during the COVID-19 period, and your collaborative efforts with the county are stellar. I think you are viewed as being one of the experts in our county on a number of different areas that have to do with management of a department such as yours, but also a number of other things, including your great leadership, your outstanding ability to communicate, and also your engagement with the community. It sounds like I'm saying goodbye, we're really not yet, because if we approve this, you're going to be with us for a while, and I just want to say, thanks for doing that, because that really affords the city to continue to benefit from your leadership during an interim time when the city manager will go out and find, if possible, a replacement for you, sir. So my hat is off to you. I just want to just thank you for that and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Do we have a motion?
Can we have, why don't we have a motion?
Well, hey, you know, I got carried away with my acknowledgement on how much I love Steve. I'm sorry, is there a motion on this?
I'll move, I'll move to approve staff recommendation.
Move, excuse me, move my Councilmember Addis for the staff recommendation, second by Councilmember Heller, who has his hand up, I see it, and I appreciate that. Any further discussion?
Yeah, raising my hand again just to show up. So I wanted to say, Chief, you're just an amazing individual, you've helped the city, and I want to thank you for not just retiring when you obviously had the right to do so, but working out an arrangement with our city manager so that you can stay on and help us for another year. Thank you, thank you so much.
With that, if there are no other comments, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding? And Mayor Heding?
Yes, and I would be remiss if I didn't take the chair's purview to allow Chief Knuckles, if he wanted to comment. The mic is yours, Chief.
Wow, what a lot of nice words and kind words, and a lot of the effort that we've done to the city is because of our city staff. I've just been fortunate enough to be here at the right time at the right place to help us out as much as we can. Scott and I have had many conversations how we would transition to this because support, to me personally, to make sure that we continue not only the fire department response level that we can with the budget that we have, but also to help make sure that we find a fire chief that will complement Scott and complement the city. It is a very unique, and I think it will be attractable to some very unique individuals that come in and shock you, and there's a lot of great leadership out there in the fire service. I've been blessed to hang out with some of the greatest leaders in California, and I do not expect anything less for City of Morro Bay. So I'll help out anyway, Scott Collins and the executive team, to find a replacement that fits Morro Bay the best. And thank you so much for your trust, and a lot of me continue to work, because it is a privilege. It's not a hidden secret. I've told Scott many times, I wish his job lasted 40 years, and, but I don't think my wife would like that. I want to stay married. But it's been an extreme pleasure to not only work for Morro Bay for 22 years, this is my 38th year in the fire service, and I'm just fortunate to take a career that we always try to find ways to help people than, than yes. So thank you so much for giving me that opportunity.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate you greatly. With that, that ends item C on our agenda. Move to item D, council declaration of future agenda items, anything for the good? Hearing none?
I have something. My hand.
I'm so, I have to look for those hands. I apologize. Councilmember Addis, I'm going to, I'm going to try to remember to do that. Thank you, go ahead.
It's not really a future agenda item, but I mentioned it at the beginning of the meeting that we need to do everything that we can to prevent gun violence, especially in the wake of two mass shootings in very little time, 18 people dead at least. And we had approved as a council, having a staff report come forward, or an agenda item come forward, to look at what our city might be able to do. And so I just want to ask for support that that comes forward as soon as possible, including as soon as the very next meeting. And I have talked with staff. The report has been done for over a year. We were originally supposed to have this item March 10th of 2020, and COVID got in the way, and it's more salient than ever. As we're seeing COVID calm down, we're seeing gun violence pick up. And so I think it's incumbent on us to bring this back as soon as possible. So I just wanted to ask for support on that.
Thank you. You have my support for that. I think we were a subcommittee with regard to the issue, and I so noted, is there, am I seeing other head nods or hands up? Laurel, I see hands, I see hands. Okay, good. All right, so we have support for that. Thank you, Councilmember Addis. And Councilmember Heller, was your hand up?
Yes, regarding future agenda items. You know, I appreciate the remarks from Sean Green about the Embarcadero, and when I think about the business of Morro Bay, whether it's right or wrong, I always think about the Embarcadero. You know, he identified several issues, the restroom access, which I think is a chronic problem, trash, which we talked about, signage, and like, who's in charge of all of this, which I thought was an interesting question, because I don't know the answer to that. So, you know, as a possible future agenda item, I'd like to suggest that staff come back with kind of an answer to that, to that question, because the Embarcadero is such a key part of our business success, and we almost, maybe we need someone to be in charge of all of those things. I don't know, but I'd like to hear what staff has to say about, about those questions that Mr. Green brought up.
Scott, did you want to comment? Scott Collins?
Sure. I'd be happy to comment on, yeah, it's, as far as agenda item, that's a council discussion, but, you know, it is, Mr. Heller has identified, and the comments made by Mr. Green, it's all hands on deck in a lot of ways. There's a lot of people that populate that area, especially during the peak season, so police fire, consolidated maintenance, harbor, you know, planning, code enforcement, I mean, everybody's sort of involved in that. So from that vantage point, it's a team effort. Specifically, the lease management side is on harbor, so they sort of manage what's going on on the water side and do their best to stay, stay on top of that. You know, the trash is largely, at least the red, the hard, hard escaped ones are managed by Morro Bay Garbage, and then the restrooms, public restrooms, specific public restrooms, and trash receptacles are consolidated maintenance. One of the benefits of this, a few of them for COVID-19, is the fact that we coordinate much more closely as staff through our EOC meetings, and have had a lot of time to collaborate, in addition to Erica Crawford being in those, those calls about these, these issues. Now, as far as whether we should designate sort of a single point, I don't know. That's, it's a fascinating question that raised by Mr. Heller or Councilmember Heller. But again, as far as bringing back an item to kind of further elaborate on that, you certainly can do that. I just, I'll leave that in the hands of council, if that's something you want to do. I know we do have, once we get the GP, our General Plan Local Coastal Program update completed, one of the sort of follow-up actions is to update, I believe, tell me if I'm wrong, the waterfront, you know, the master plan, and I think sort of some of those issues could be teased out in that discussion, but I don't want to lead us astray if that's not correct. I don't want to sidestep the issue, because I think it's an important one raised by Councilmember Heller. Scott, is that the master plan part of the, is a follow-up kind of action item from the General Plan Local Coastal Program?
That's correct. It acknowledges the documents old, needs to be updated, and reflect, you know, how we do business down on the water fronts and among many other things, but yes.
Yeah, okay. And that's probably, if we, to be realistic, that would be somewhere next year, next calendar year, before that would come forward? Or when do you think that would, we would start that?
I mean, it should be part of the council's goal-setting process to identify, you know, what are the, what are the go-do items that they want us to start on? So, yeah, that would be certainly one of the key ones, and one of the ones that needs to be tackled sooner rather than later, for sure, so.
Obviously, I support the updating the waterfront master plan. That's a key, key component, but I'm talking about the chronic issues that we see at the Embarcadero, which have been talked about for years, frankly, that seem to persist. So I think it's fairly urgent, frankly, and I'm not, I'm not sure that we should put it off any longer, or why we wouldn't want to put it off any longer. So anyway, that's, I don't know how the council feels about that, but I see.
Councilmember Heller, could I, could I ask you once again to be specific with regard to the agenda item? Just, I want to be clear for everyone.
Yes, the agenda item is there are chronic issues at the Embarcadero relative to restroom access, trash, and signage. I'd like staff to come back and address who's in charge of, or whether we should have a single person in charge of all of those things, because they're chronic issues that I think need to be addressed.
Okay, I'll look around for.
Is that, is that clicked enough for you?
Yeah, no, I got it. I just wanted to make sure that it was repeated and that everybody, since we have commentaries in between, I've got it down, I wrote it down, I'm clear. I'm just looking for support. I'll either look for your hands, or if you want to comment, for other council members. Councilmember Heller's got his hand up, of course.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping to start, start a thing, you know, get a cascade of hands.
It's working.
I would like to join Jeff in making that a priority. As Erica was talking, and as we think about how we market ourselves, and how important tourism is to our, you know, it's our lifeblood here, and so I would, I would agree with him that it's something that needs to be dealt with sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Thank you, Laurel.
At two here is, for any other hands to go up. Not seeing any other hands. Councilmember Heller, I, personally, I'm thinking this, this will come back sooner with regard to what Mr. Collins described. I share your concern, and also think that this will, as we enter into the goal-setting process, will be a priority area to deal with. And so with that, I'll make note that, at least from my perspective, that that's, that's an area of concern, and that we certainly want to make sure we address it then. So, okay.
Hey, well, I have another one.
Yes, sir. Yes, please.
So, as many members of the public know, trees are being cut down as part of the piping project, or part of the WRF project. And the permit that we have with the Coastal Commission does not provide for any replacement trees, but I know the city has a policy for replacement trees for private property owners. And I guess I would like to get staff to come back with some options that the council could consider regarding a replacement tree program that would remedy the situation with respect to the differential between the WRF, the Coastal Commission permit and the city, city permits, and I'm willing to volunteer time to put together cost proposals from landscape contractors, so we know what, what kind of money we might be talking about. I know that's kind of like the mayor, but.
Yeah, no, I, since, I'll just comment, since we're both on the WRF Subcommittee, we did discuss that this week, and for most folks, for your knowledge, we do have a tree replacement program. I won't pretend to say that I reviewed it yet, but if, looking for Mr. Livik, if he's on board, or Mr. Collins, to just.
Mr. Livik is not, he got the night off after public comment, so this will have to be one of those, hey, well, we can come bring back more information, because I don't have it top of mind.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nor do I.
Okay, nor do I. And I know we're, it's an agenda item on the WRF Subcommittee to bring back and to get an understanding of what that is, and then perhaps maybe even come with a formal recommendation. So I'm just looking for any other comments. If we need to agendize this in particular now, I'm looking for any hands or any comments. So my sense is we'll grab it, and I have it down for an agenda item for us, Jeff, on the WRF Subcommittee, and we'll make sure that, as a subcommittee, we'll report back to council, do it that way, rather than having to write a full staff report?
Sure. Sounds good.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Great. Thank you for that. Any other items? Hearing none, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. The next regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, April 13th, 2021, at 5:30 PM via teleconference. Thank you all. Good evening. Be safe and be well.
Thank you.
Good night, all. Everyone. Good for you.
Thanks a lot.